Alright, everybody. I'm sorry about that delay. Sometimes we have technical challenges, but then we push on. So I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of March 25th order. It is 6:07 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Alright, thank you very much. So, we're gonna go ahead and get started with a call to order and roll call. So Ms. Trimble, would you go ahead and do roll call, please?
Absolutely. Good evening. Anderson. Absent. Becerra.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Carlino.
Present.
Farmer.
Present.
Jones.
Present.
Jordan.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
Nugent.
Present.
Savage. Absent. Cheryl. Absent. Asika.
Present.
That is nine present and three absent.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. And for the record, I did just want to mention to folks here that Counselor Savage is joining and attempting to join from a place with weak internet. So she may or may not be on due to that. So she said she was trying, but to let y'all know. We may see her join a little bit later in the meeting. Okay. Great. We'll move on then to approval of the minutes. We have two sets of this evening to approve. Minutes from March 4th and minutes from March 11th, 2024. Do any counselors have any changes to minutes as they stand? Not seeing any here. Not having any online? Then those minutes will go ahead and stand as written. Thank you. Next, we have announced changes to committee meeting agendas and committee membership approvals. Ms. Trimble, are you aware of any committee changes?
I think there might be one being proposed. Is Ms. Jones still interested in changing the one on behalf of President Cheryl?
Would that be the Committee of the Whole Council report out potentially, or budget?
Yes. There was, there was a rumor that we might not have Committee of the Whole this week.
Ms. Becerra is presiding off. I think it is to power meetings since.
If there are no council members who want to report out on their membership to different committees, then I don't think we need to hold that committee. So if anyone is planning on reporting, then we keep it. But if not, then I think we should just come in a little later. I'm not seeing anyone jumping to keep that committee on the schedule. So I would suggest that we do away with it and start a little bit later.
Okay. No objections. It looks like the Committee of the Whole will be canceled, canceled for Wednesday, March 27th. Ms. Trimble, is there anything more that you need to announce in regards to that?
I was just going to make a good of the order announcement. The first meeting of the day will then become Public Safety, Health, and Operations beginning at 9:00 AM.
Great. Alright. Thank you very much. And for members of the audience and those watching online, the committee schedule for March 27th, 2024 is located on the City Council Agenda and Meeting website. Alright. Next, we will move on to special presentations and proclamations. And this is also an opportunity for me to, again, welcome members of the public here in the room and then also folks online. We do have a few special presentations and proclamations this evening, which is great. Also, just, also for the good of the order, to mention, we do have a few public hearings, several of which deal with some interim urgency zoning amendments and some additional Title 20 changes. And so we do have four public hearings. And beyond that, that's really what we have. So also, I'd like to make it just a bit routine for a while as we get into the new flow of our City Council agenda. The City Council did approve a change to our City Council agenda where the beginning of the agenda is administrative in nature. So approving minutes, changes to committee schedule, things like that. And then the bulk of the City Council business is really in the middle of the agenda. And that's when we hear special presentations and proclamations, and then also working to see through things like public hearings and consent agenda, and then regular business, which would be items that may get moved off the consent agenda, or things that counselors wish to discuss that were discussed in committee that they'd like to have discussed on council, the council floor on Monday nights. And then we move to more informational items, which are, excuse me, and then public comment is taken throughout that whole process. And I will call for public comment throughout, letting you know when it's time. We do keep our public comment to three minutes, and we also work to keep our public comments civil and respectful. And then at the, towards the end of the meeting, we do have public comment on items not on the agenda, as well as mayor comments and City Council comments. So more informational there. So moving back then to item number four, which is special presentations and proclamations. Our first this evening is Neighborhood Council updates. So we have two neighborhoods that are here tonight, and looking around for Kalina? Yay. Hi, Melissa's here tonight. Do you want to go ahead and kick us off? Thanks, Melissa. Sorry about that. I should probably get my glasses on so I can see you.
On? No. Okay, cool. Um, I'm Melissa Glucker. I'm one of the neighborhood specialists here at the city. It.
Can't hear? Okay, hold on. Just one moment, Melissa. Test, test?
Test. Test, test.
And if you need to adjust the microphone, you.
Um, I'm Melissa Glucker. I'm one of the neighborhood specialists here at the city. Here at Reunited. It's something that's been on the council agenda, but hasn't been utilized. We're bringing it back, and what it'll look like is about two neighborhoods a week. Just telling you what's important to them. About the nice. Have. So I'm here to answer any concerns of the community, but we have two neighborhoods. Franklin de Fort, University. So I'll just hand it over to them.
That sounds great. Thanks, Melissa. Come on up. And please just mention your name and your last, spelling of your last name is really helpful. Yes, we can.
Okay. So my name is Jen Worrell. It's W. A. Fort. So I just had a short list of things to kind of review. The first thing is our Neighborhood General Meeting is going to be held on Tuesday, April 6th. And in the cafeteria. And all speakers are invited. The second item is our upcoming Franklin de Fort Neighborhood Cleanup is going to be held Saturday, April 7th, and voluntary appreciated. One more thing, we are starting to plan for our block party, which should be held. And we're hoping to have it. Planning has started. Our next big thing. And finally, the last item, both our leadership team and the neighborhood residents would appreciate an update on the future of either stroke.
Excellent. Excellent, Jen. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And that includes the updates that you had in your memo. And I can briefly say that as an update for current Johnson Street operations, as we continue to see the weather warming and folks may wish to be outside more than inside, we are continuing with our current procedures that work to help encourage people to access the shelter. And then we do monitor folks that are camping outside and staying outside to make sure that folks are able to be compliant with health and safety requirements of our community. We do encourage folks, if they see some troublesome behavior, to make sure that you do call 911. That's one way for us to be able to respond. And I know that sometimes it might not feel like an emergency. And we also have been attending, city staff have been attending the Pavarello Centers Johnson Street Shelter Meetings, which are the first Tuesday, I believe, of every month. And you can sign up for that on the Pavarello Centers website. We are hosting, or we're holding, the City Council's holding an urban camping working group. So that next meeting is the third of five. There may only be four, but we're planning three to five of those urban camping working groups. And while that doesn't, it's not intended to address the Johnson Street facility specifically. It's more about how are we, what considerations do we need to make as a, what considerations does City Council need to make, and other community partners to help alleviate some of the strain on both folks that are living unsheltered, as well as neighborhoods and places where folks tend to sleep and congregate. So what we're hoping will come out of that urban camping working group will be a set of recommendations that the City Council can consider, and ideally, a host of other ideas in partnership with the, with the community for ways that we can help alleviate some of the challenges associated with folks that are continuing to live unsheltered. We always recommend that if you have any concerns, that you report it on our, let me find the website, on the City of Missoula's website, there is a form that you can report issues if there are folks that are living outside in RVs or in encampments around the area. And then we can come and help with our code compliance folks. And we do try to connect people that are unsheltered to live with, to connect with resources. And it's helpful if community members can communicate their concerns to us. That way we can follow up as soon as possible. The master planning for the Johnson Street site will be started by this September, and that will be undertaken by the Missoula Redevelopment Agency. And so we will be going through a process. We'll likely bring in a consultant to help us start that master planning process. And we would love to coordinate between now and then with the leadership team of the Franklin de Fort Neighborhood in terms of some additional ways that we could do some outreach to keep folks up to speed on what's happening there, and then with the existing operations, but then also with that master planning effort. The other thing I do want to mention is you might see some construction on site. And that is because we are building temporary bathrooms and showers that will be able to be portable or moved. They'll be much better for the guests staying at the shelter, because currently we're utilizing a porta potty service, where these will be much more, they'll be much more sanitary for folks using them, but they are portable for when that location is no longer a shelter. We are constructing that on site. And the area around that is a construction zone, so there is construction fencing. But we are doing our best to work on that to make it a little bit more attractive for everybody, the guests of the shelter, as well as the neighborhoods. It's okay. And, and we do continue to take the ongoing concerns of access to the park along the trail very serious. We know there's some significant impact to the Missoula rail link park and the surrounding neighborhood. We have also increased patrols on a routine basis throughout the day just to make sure that we can help monitor if there is any challenging behavior. And really, we're just trying to help connect people with, with resources as we can. So we would encourage you to stay in touch with us so we can all run this together. And we appreciate, appreciate that very much. You're very welcome. Thank you. And thanks for your participation. Really appreciate it. Yes, Counselor Asika?
I just wanted to quickly, while you were still up there, sorry. Well, I just wanted to let folks know that the cleanup for Franklin de Fort Neighborhood is actually does not take up very much of your time, and it is super fun, especially if it's a decently nice spring day. So highly recommended. It will take up like 30 minutes to four hours, depending on what route you decide to do. And all help is really welcome, because many hands make light work. So I just wanted to encourage anyone in that area, or even other neighborhoods who want to come and help. Highly recommended for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asika. I really appreciate that nudge. It really is fun and made a really big difference last year. It was just wonderful to see people come out for that. Thank you for that. Alright, now I believe then we have our next Neighborhood Presentation, which is the University District Leadership Team. Come on up.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Arseka Karon, K-A-R-O-N. And I am the Chair of the University District Leadership Team. Thanks for the opportunity. Few of the things currently working on. One of the first things that is on our agenda that's been on our, over a year now, is parking study. We've been tracking the study, watching. Thing we have a member. We're always hearing concern. Concern about excluding. They pay. Looking to have. And what that. This is. We're trying to. Everyone. We are also participating in the. We are fortunate. We have a lot of org. You know. Along the river. And in that area. So the last few years that we've had the cleanup, we've kind of turned it into. A celebration, or last year it was football court. But this year, we're looking to provide some information to our neighbors. Fire mitig. Starting. Good. Been. I put being. Mountain. And we also, we're going to provide some. King study. Hoping to gather information for the Prost. Study that's going on in Bonner Park. People to come and. Bonner Park gets used by a lot of people. So providing that up. Share what they like about. Them send. Add to the information that. By that committee. And we've written a couple of them over. Works on one of the. And the last year, we. So we're excited about that. Excited about what. In the. And then lastly, just one other thing that wasn't on the list. One of the, I most of, being on the leadership. Next. Has been a huge resource. Keeps us up to date on what. Student. One of our team members worked with. Student. Being leave. This one.
Wonderful. Thank you for that update. And did I get your last name right? Is it Karen?
Karen, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Ms. Karen. I appreciate that. And yeah, hopefully there's opportunities that we can take from the example of university folks helping their neighbors. And we do see that in some other parts of the community. And I certainly know that folks that are shut in or at home or unable to do that work, certainly appreciate it. The other thing that I'll just mention, thanks for bringing up the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan, or Prost. So we're not just hosting a beverage, but it is something that is a really integral part of the city's planning efforts. And it really goes along with our, our growth planning. And it's easy to find on our website as well. If you just look up Missoula Prost, it'll go right to it. It shows you ways in which you can engage and take part and make sure your voice is heard on that. But it really is a way in which we are looking to help not, not only maintain the excellent recreation open space and trails we have, but making sure that it is open and accessible for everybody. And as we, you know, move into the next decade, how we are evolving with our community. So thank you for taking part in that. Does any, do any council members have any questions or comments for Ms. Karen? Okay, thank you very much. Really appreciate you being here. And we're very much appreciative of both the University District and the Franklin de Fort Neighborhood Councils. As, as Ms. Glucker mentioned, it's, it's been a little bit since we've had Neighborhood Council Leadership Team Members come present to City Council. And our Neighborhood Councils, per our city charter, are part of our city government. And it's fantastic to have your citizen participation. And thank you for the time that you spend and the effort you make. I appreciate it. Alright. We will next move on to item 4.2, which is Narcan Vending Machines. And so I will queue this up and invite Susan Hay Patrick, the CEO of United Way of Missoula County, to come on up. And as you saw here, this is an informational item on the installation of Narcan machines in the Missoula community. And Shannon's not here this evening, is she? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, hello.
And Leah Fitch Brody.
And I'm sorry?
And Leah Fitch Brody from Missoula Public Health.
Wonderful. Thank you all for being here. Really appreciate it. So I'll go ahead and just have you take it away, if you would, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I got the memo on red and black tonight, Sandy and Bob. As Mayor Davis said, Susan Hay Patrick, CEO of United Way of Missoula County. And as always, thank you, elected officials and city staff for your service to our community. We all know that illegal drugs, opioids and fentanyl are destroying lives and families and communities in, across our nation. And we also know that a strong law enforcement response is critical to addressing this tragedy. But until we as a nation focus more attention and resources on prevention, treatment, and support for those in recovery, people are going to continue to die, and our jails, healthcare system, and courtrooms will continue to be choked with drug cases. We are not going to arrest away out of this tragedy. As I said, people are dying right here in Missoula. As one small step toward saving lives, United Way of Missoula County, in partnership with Missoula Public Health, will be installing four naloxone, commonly known as Narcan, vending machines at spots throughout our community. They will provide free doses of Narcan, a life-saving over-the-counter nasal spray that will enable people to save the life of someone experiencing a drug overdose. I'm going to turn things over to my colleague Shannon Sproul and Leah Fitch Brody from Missoula Public Health. But first, I want to emphasize, we are not sanctioning drug use, and we are not endorsing drug use or enabling drug use. We simply are trying to prevent people from dying from opioid overdoses. We are recognizing that that is a fact, and we want to do something about it, even if it's a small way. Providing free Narcan, a federally approved prevention strategy, alliance with Missoula Public Health's mission of strengthening the, or supporting the health of people, environments, and communities, along with United Way's longstanding focus on health as a cornerstone of a good life and a healthy community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our project managers. And unless anybody has any questions for me, but they're really the people who are running the show. So again, thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Really appreciate that. If we have any questions for you, we'll call you up. Ms. Sproul, take it away. And Ms. Fitch Brody, if you want to come up as a duo, you're more than welcome, however you wish to give the presentation. Absolutely. Yeah. Okay, great. Hopefully you're not looking to me for your technological needs, as you saw what happened earlier.
Good night.
Hello.
Yeah, close to the mic. Thank you. The recording has the ability to pick up your presentation that way. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much for this. Like, share with you information. Guided by the Missoula Drug Coalition, which was a combination of a United Way. Committee. So. And. And I'm, I guess I'd introduce Shannon Sproul.
Thank you, Ms. Sproul.
Hi, everyone. I'm Leah Fitch Brody, F-I-T-C-H dash B-R-O-D-Y. I am a September 20th Prevention Coordinator at. And yeah, we're here tonight to talk about the special project. About, just if you haven't heard of Missoula Drug Safety Coalition, you're probably not alone, because it's a very new name. As Shannon was saying, we combined two groups in Missoula. These are, this just represents some of the amazing organizations that are part of this effort. And so one of the reasons we are trying to address is because of the increase in overdoses that we have seen in Missoula County over the past. As you can see on the first kind of graph, you can see that we have seen a general increase in overdose-related deaths. When I say overdose, it, I, this particular ones, those are related to death. But when we say overdose, it doesn't necessarily mean. For this, we are showing fatalities. In 2022, we saw 24 deaths related to overdose. That constitutes an increase of 71% from the year before. You can see that opioids are, are very much driving this, this increase in overdose deaths. And then you can also see the bottom graph that fentanyl specifically has. In terms of causing overdose. So in general, you know, if you've read the newspaper, you know that we are having overdoses. And one of the tools that we have, you know, there are several tools that we can use, but one of the tools that we have in our community right now that can be used by anybody is to use naloxone or Narcan. Placotrimbostat was also on there. So Narcan is basically, it's just a certain amount of the drug. What Narcan does. So what naloxone does. If somebody. It over. So the main thing that. does the way opioids it goes down the Right? So and basically that. Okay. So that is kind of the main of Narcan. If I were to give myself Narcan right now, it would not So it doesn't harm people who don't have an opioid. I just want you to know. Because many people are concerned, like, well, what if that person isn't experiencing an opioid-related overdose? Well, it's not going to hurt them in a potential. So it's a drug that we can use safe, effective. I'm going to go into another tool that we have in our state and in our community, and that's the Good Samaritan. And this is very, very important as well. So Narcan is important for being able to reverse an overdose. But if, you know, somebody could go back into an overdose, even if Narcan only lasts about 30 And so somebody could go into an overdose even if they were given Narcan. Or they may need, you know, two doses of Narcan, depending on So it's really important that somebody access medical care. Now, that might not feel great for everybody. Imagine if you were using drugs or if somebody, or you were using drugs with somebody who was overdosing, you might be tentative to want to call 911, right? In trouble. So Good Samaritan Law is basically protecting people who are experiencing an overdose, or the person who reported that overdose from certain criminal related drugs, right? So paraphernalia on them using drugs, then they are not So that is another thing. So we're not only saying, hey, we want Narcan, but hey, we still want to get the medical
As we mentioned previously, Missoula Sub-Order Connect Coalition, part of the United Way, combined of health form, the Missoula Drug And so how we came to be and how this project came to be was that we actually heard Helena had installed two vending machines in their community. And basically sort of said, hey. And really, the stars sort of aligned. And as it happens, there was a funder request and said, I heard you wanted to do this and we may have funding for you. That funder that's something else. But anyway, that funder is the IERP Trust, the Independent Emergency Room Physician Trust, which is a trust that was formed with opioid abatement funds and is specifically at helping alleviate impact of opioid overdoses in the emergency department. So they had some funding and they said, this seems like a good project. And they have provided the funding to purchase the machine and one of the So how did we decide how and where and how many? We used a mapping system called ODMAP for overdose mapping, and which is used in a number of states. We were able to zoom in to Missoula and look at where our fatal and non-fatal overdoses were occurring. And there were really three, three to five main areas of our community that stood downtown was our number one area in which most incidents, basically crime and. And so we knew that that was one of our top priorities. I would say about a six block distance of low center, so not just the Pavarello, but Pope maybe. And the reserve, the, excuse me, the Russell Street corridor. And by that, I mean sort of from the Russell Street Bridge to about Fifth Street and a couple. So that sort of was another area of concern. There was an area of concern in sort of the north curve area, the Brook Reserve section, sort of area like, but our focus, we decided Once we decided on those, we sought out partners based on that location, who might good fit the project. The very first partner was Mountain Line. And we really, given the number of incidents downtown and the location the courthouse and the city offices and legal entities, et cetera, it was really wanted it outdoor as well. The Pavarello clearly was a great partner, also from the bank and Hope Rescue Mission, which dropped The Narcan vending machine that will at Mountain Line will actually be external And in our research about what other places in the country are doing about naloxone machines, is that 24/7 low barrier, no barrier, that naloxone. So outdoor machine, it will place person. And they have partnered with us. The ones, the Pavarello Food Rescue Mission will Oh, sorry. Actually, the Pavarello started this summer. The Street Shelter had not opened, opened yet. And so actually, that it will be placed at the John Street Shelter. And if and when they close, it will be back to the So the main goal, obviously, naloxone, is community distribution to as many people as possible. And with that, the state of Montana provides Narcan for free to various community. The health department received it, various entities in Missoula receive it as well, and we will receive it. And it will, that free cost will be passed on to the community members. So those vending machines, you'll still have to punch the button, you know, A7 to get your Narcan, but it will be for free during What will be in the machines, obviously Narcan, that's what we're talking about, but also there will be fentanyl test strips. So fentanyl test strips is a little packet that comes with a test strip and a little scoop. And for the person who might be using any sort of drugs, can test their supply and make sure that there is not fentanyl in there. People who obtain their drugs illegally may not know what's inside them. And fentanyl is just really getting into everything these days. So if you don't whatever you're using, and that could include anything, right, for any of us. If you didn't get it directly from a pharmacy and you don't know where it came from, you don't know what's in it. So this helps people determine whether, whether they use it all or whether they use. So harm reduction is this. Those items, the fentanyl test strips are being generously donated by the Uni, United, the University of Montana's Students for Sensible Drug Policy Group. So those also then will be There will be an resources, the there is a website that people can go to. And on the machines themselves and in the resources and on the website, will be access to how to actually what do I want to apply, apply the Narcan with a video, but also resources on where to get treatment and support, treatment and recovery support, and also a link to peer support services, which allows people to obtain support through peer-to-peer That is also a separate project that's being funded by the same independent emergency They'll have an 800 number that We just talked about all that. We're looking at the, I'm trying to get a more exact date, but it should be sometime in April, that the placement of these machines happen. Maintenance is being provided by the United Way with funding for that maintenance and provided by the IERP Trust. And we will track how much is being used, look at what items are being used and track that. As a side note, in Helena, they just published a newspaper article or an article demonstrating how many boxes of Narcan they distributed last year in 2022. And in Helena, they were able to distribute 885 boxes of naloxone. And that's in their criminal justice center and their drop-in, only two locations in neither of So we are So I'm, we're of course open to questions, but I know one question that some people have is, won't this encourage people to use drugs? So just as seatbelts don't encourage people to drive worse, we're looking to prevent injury and death with seatbelts, just as blood alcohol content limits not encourage people to drink more, we're trying to keep people from drinking themselves, others. And getting right, right, we're looking at harm reduction strategies to make sure that people are safe and healthy. There's a couple of really great articles that I put in the PowerPoint that if you want to get a little bit more, one of them is from the National Ocean County.
Great. Thank you very much for that excellent presentation. Do councilors have any questions or comments, questions? Yes. Counselor Basika.
Thank you. As a counselor, I'm pretty decently familiar with the opioid abatement funding. But I was hoping if you can do a very brief history on how we came, how the state got hold of those funds and where those funds originally came. Because wasn't it a medical company or a, somebody got sued back in the day and then that's how the state came with the funds? Or am I completely wrong?
Nope. You are, you are on the right track.
All right, thank you.
So our trustee would like to answer that. She's really well versed, probably more well than I am in that, so.
Great. Yeah, come on up.
So what I wanted opioid monies that came from subtle not way that number press them. And those are there's when somebody with
I really appreciate that eagle's eye view, because I could not explain that. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Other questions? Go ahead. Counselor Carolina.
Yeah, I just wanted to also add too that we had a resolution to use part of our funding for fentanyl test strips. So if the student group runs out, you know, the city county health department has extra as well. And I really appreciate you all's work on this. I think, you know, this is an issue that shouldn't be handled by criminal justice issue, but a public health issue. So I really appreciate you all's respect. We've lost way too many Missoulians from this. So appreciate what you all are doing to help produce that in the future.
Counselor Becerra.
Thank you. I too want to thank you for all your work on this. And I think we can save lives for sure. One question I have is, does the box that you showed us contain gloves or something to create another barrier between the person administering and the person receiving? I'm asking this because I've heard, and I don't know if this is true, stories that someone can have be having an overdose based on something that's on them, not necessarily inhaled or consumed or whatever. So I don't know if that's true or not, but just wondering the contact point.
So I would call Narcan control. But that is something that, yeah, that is a myth that has been perpetuated and is if you're worried about touching are you, are you less likely to, if they're in need, right? What they have found is that fentanyl is very inefficient at going through your And one of the reasons that we have that myth, I believe, is because of chronic pain. But that goes in the skin over hours or days. Okay. So you just touching it. So that is very, very unlikely to go. In fact, they've done studies of people like putting their finger in fentanyl and it not, right? So that is a myth. I would say that you should probably, you might want to watch However, I do understand, like, you're worried about that. So
We've come prepared.
I have a kit that I do have, like a little thing that has gloves as well as a CPR. Now CPR shield is important, I would say. One of the main things, and if I were doing this training, so basically Narcan, it takes three minutes to work. And you're trying to get that person's breath. As you're waiting for that person to recover, you likely will be breaths. You're trying to basically their lungs. And so that's going to be really important. So I definitely recommend having the mouth, the shields. I think too, like having gloves might also be a good idea. But at this point, I don't believe we have funding for that.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, this is stuff that, you know, we hear oftentimes, you know, you can get through your, we have read stories about it. So I think it's really important for them to know what's true, what's not, and that help, no matter what.
To finalize or finally answer additionally answer your question, there there will not be a mouth guard or gloves in the boxes themselves. The boxes from the state and they're just the naloxone. But we are hoping to put in there just, just for safety. And I, I would just add my two cents that the rescue breaths are really critically important. It's not just give someone the naloxone and then sit and wait. It'd be calling 911 and also doing rescue. So.
Any other questions? Yeah. Counselor Jones. Oh, I'm sorry. I think Counselor Campbell had his hand up. Sorry, my machine is a little tiny.
Thank you, ma'am. I just had a general comment.
I think that's fine. Yeah, you bet.
To me, this is a no-brainer. Support of it. You know, anytime we get something out there that could be so easily administered we think about training that has to take place, CPR, blade or devices, something like this, this firsthand experience, I've seen it used and used successfully. CP R, the blade or devices, something like this, this firsthand experience, I've seen it used and used successfully. I've. Product or. Having up. Bill. Medicine. Those. Thank.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Jones?
Just really quickly, could you say again, when these machines will be in place? When you anticipate?
We anticipate that it will be, uh, implemented and in place in April. I, we're still trying to hear about shipment.
Thank.
Yeah. Thank you all again.
Uh, one, one more. Counselor Jordan, please.
Last minute question. I'm a, I'm a slow processor. Um, I'm just kind of curious. Um, I am, first of all, I want to say I'm super supportive of this. I think this is wonderful. I think that, um, our community needs to learn a lot about, yeah, it's not sanctioned use and that harm reduction is the first approach to starting to address. And so I love this. It's an amazing. I'm kind of curious how much the program is just going to cost every year and is the funding unlimited? Like, is it, are we going to have the funding in perpetuity? Or are we going to look at, uh, sunset at some point?
Um, it is not, it is not in perpetuity. Um, we have funding, I believe, for at least two years, probably look, we'll have to sort of, since this is new to us, we don't know exactly how much. For this. Um, to do all the maintenance portion of it. So that cost is sort of certain. Um, that might be around $10,000 here for that maintenance piece. Um, but we're just not sure because we're not sure how much. So, um, see, and as long as Narcan continues free from the state, we won't have to worry about that cost as long as we're still maintain, still obtain, uh, fentanyl tests. Or then that. So it's not hugely that current time. It's not a hugely. You.
Thank you for that question, Counselor Jordan. Um, are there others? Questions? Okay, great. Well, I want to thank all the presenters that are here this evening and really appreciate the work of the I E R P. Um, Missoula, um, Missoula Health and the United Way for your continued work on the collective impact on important work in our community. So thank you very much. And we're excited to, uh, see how this, this goes. And we know we'll be able to evaluate that through the work of the United Way. Thank you very much. Great. Well, we'll go ahead then and move on to the next agenda item, which is four point three. It's a proclamation zero waste day. And I, uh, I do see that we have Kelly Hess, Executive Director of Home Resource here. So you may want to come up and add to, to this, but, um, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation first. Uh, whereas our current linear economic system by which the vast majority of resources are extracted, manufactured, sold, used and discarded is an unsustainable and costly driver of climate change. And whereas a circular economic model based on the principles of reduce, reuse, repair, regeneration and zero waste is a climate solution with local economic and environmental benefits. And whereas the city of Missoula is working toward waste reduction goals as guided by zero by fifty, Missoula's path to zero waste in partnership with Home Resource and others. And whereas communities across the globe raise awareness for zero waste practices and policies on March thirtieth, International Zero Waste Day. And whereas waste reduction is accessible to all people and together, small actions to reduce, reuse, repair and compost create economic opportunity and environmental benefit. Now therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the thirtieth day of March, twenty twenty-four as Zero Waste Day. Wonderful. Thank you all so much. Our partner, uh, uh, representing Home Resource, um, Kelly Hess is in the room. Appreciate your partnership, uh, with the city and the work on this and everything that you do, um, for our community. And, um, yeah, let's just keep the creative juices flowing on this. Some really good things that come out of this work together. Thanks, everybody. Kelly, did you want to say anything? You're more than welcome to come on up.
Hi, I'm Kelly Hess. Um, H S S, my last, and thank you all for your service. I really appreciate the opportunity. Thanks for the proclamation. I never knew I was such. Um, big deal for us. So at Home Resource, we're Missoula Sustainability Center. We're working every day to try to reduce our waste footprint, um, of Missoula. Building materials represent over forty percent of the mass of materials going to our landfill every year. And, uh, last year, Home Resource was able to divert over one point eight million pounds of, of waste going to the landfill. This year, um, I've been with Home Resource now for about eighteen months and this year trying to be more proactive in sharing the message about we as a community really need to do what said we will all do, what, um, our city is committed to with our zero by fifty plan and, um, work together to reduce our waste footprint. So not only is now Saturday officially Zero Waste Day, it's International, um, Day Around the Globe, but this week is Zero Waste Week. And so we're trying to make a big deal of it, really just sharing the knowledge about, um, how we together can work on reducing waste and the impact that that can have on our climate. Um, long, right? When we're throwing away less, we're actually consuming less, which means less materials need to be extracted, um, in the first place. And so it's really is a triple win for, for us. Uh, like all of you, I came to Missoula because it's such a beautiful and wonderful place. And, um, love that we're working together. So thank you for the proclamation. Work with you all and link arms in this important work towards keeping our, our community beautiful and wonderful. Driving.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. My absolute pleasure, pleasure. We have a, um, a great community with community driven support and plans for efforts like this. And, uh, we will look forward to future presentations where we can share on the hazardous waste disposal facility that, um, is underway at Home Resource. And, you know, currently we don't have a place for, um, our citizens to continuously take hazardous waste products, as most communities do not, um, in Montana. And so this is something that we will, um, help establish for the communities. So we can make sure that we keep our offer, um, as pristine as possible. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, great. Well, then that wraps up our special presentations and proclamations and we'll move on to public hearings. State law and city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the city council and mayor invite community comment. City council holds a public hearing and then votes the following week unless there is a requirement for final action on the night. So we are going to move on to item five point one. It is the State Local Infrastructure Partnership Act. And we have staff member Eric Hallstrom here to present. Mr. Hallstrom.
Oh, good evening. I'm just making sure the presentation's displaying properly. Uh, for the record, my name is Eric Hallstrom. I'm the city's chief operations officer and I'm here to brief. Counsel and the public on the State Local Infrastructure Partnership Act. Also be presenting the administration's recommended priority use for the funds for eligibility. And spoiler alert, the Incan local government building is the priority. And because of that, I've gone with us tonight to share a little bit of tech for, uh, the, the development of that project and the work gone into taking that building, uh, taking responsibility for that. At the conclusion of the hearing tonight, we're requesting the action from the city council to, uh, our recommended priority project. Enable submit to the. Uh, move. So. Let me begin with just a little background on the State Local Infrastructure Partnership for council members who are at, uh, public. Public Health Safety Committee. If this, most of this will be the first part of this presentation. Similar and. In building. This legislation was passed during the twenty twenty-three legislative session and it is state funded initiative designed to assist cities and towns in financing the maintenance and repair of local government facilities through collaborative. Said for that great off. Web page, uh, for the, for the program. Under the law, local governments are required to contribute a twenty percent cash match. That's twenty-five percent of the total project cost, not twenty-five percent of the portion is funded through, uh, through the act resources. It establishes a formula for funding. Uh, it is not a competitive grant program. We're not competing against other communities. We pull for eight hundred and fifty-seven. Dollars in funds. And the act and the Montana Department of established sideboards use for project management, big guidance on prioritization. Laid out a process. Prioritizations done at, in cities and I'll go through a little bit. Uh, we start asking, what are the eligible projects? There's an infrastructure bill and it covers facilities. Facilities like water systems, bridges, roads, buildings, uh, along. A slide before you, um, critically, the funds have to be directed towards maintaining or repairing existing local. And, uh, existing government, local government infrastructure is defined as infrastructure that was in existence on June thirteenth, eighteen twenty-three. The date on which. Um, as I shared in committee, uh, it's important to start off with understanding some of the limits, how we can use. We can't spend this money to build housing or invest. Portable housing trust fund, uh, can't purchase firefighting apparatus or new firehouse. And can't use it for work that's already, can't. Supplement project already underway and been, or just moved forward after. Process laid out, cities and towns to determine where they. What they apply for, set forth in the. Starts with the solicitation and acceptance of internal applications for funding. And we followed Montana League of Cities and the Department of Commerce's recommendation. We started with our community investment plan, sometimes referred to as our C I P. Uh, C I P is the city's capital investment planning document, five-year and sometimes longer time horizon. It has been passed by council. Right placed. To determine what big. Are ripe use of these resources. We followed that by, followed up by developing ranking criteria, started with project ranking within the C I P itself. And then we narrowed that universe, applying filters, looked at. Sorry, we, we applied filters, we narrowed that universe, we brought the project that still bubbled up to our senior leadership team to review and discuss prior to bringing a final recommendation to council and to. Reason. Uh, as I mentioned on March fifth, we brought our initial presentation to council of operations committee, that's the hearing that we're having tonight. Uh, the requirement for a hearing is not typical for a program, but it is part of in the state and local infrastructure partnership. And at the conclusion of tonight's hearing, council needs to adopt the recommendation for funding priority. With that completed, then move forward depending on our application date. We don't anticipate. The Department of Commerce will, and explicitly they've said they're not interested in substituting their judgment for that of local communities, but they do, uh, have a series of processes we need to make. In compliance with. Ultimately, we are hoping that you would foundation we're putting forth to date. And as I mentioned on the fifth, uh, as for timing, the Department of Commerce has. Said that communities submit their applications by March thirtieth, why we're tonight on the twenty-fifth, the last minute. To ensure that we can meet that deadline. It is not a hard. And if council needs additional time to discuss the, their plan, uh, that is certainly doable, but we are making every effort possible to comply with Department of Commerce's request, um, that we get. But just a little bit about the process, this is graphic presentation of the work that senior leadership team did. We were mindful of finding Goldilocks project, project one that was large enough to take advantage of full act. Available resources, but small enough to appropriately meet timelines and other. For. For the, for the program. Said we filtered it based on. C I P rankings eligibility, project eligibility. And we looked at the, some of the other categories that we looked urgency of need of repair, preserve or return the infrastructure or facility to service. We looked at the importance of the infrastructure or facility to maintaining vital city operations and services. We looked at the cost of inaction, the difficulty of funding the project through traditional means. Bring grant programs or, uh, funding with. About third-party restrictions. And we've also had a cat criteria that if the first, those previous criterias don't result in a substantial differentiation between projects, that we would give priority to water sewer, non-system fire suppression system, uh, project that's part of the law. And so we wanted to honor that, uh, piece of. Me. As I mentioned before, projects that rose to the two of our, um, difficult to fund. Building. Will permit building of construction project and the. I'll just take a quick moment to walk through. Analysis that led us to, to the Incan building as higher priority. There's an extreme urgency of need to return the facility to service. Twenty eighteen, I, our space needs assessment for the city found that there was an immediate need for city hall for another seventeen thousand feet of square feet of space, a fifty percent increase usable. Uh, as the home office for many of the city's functions, the Incan building scores among the highest in its importance to maintain, contain our vital city operations and services into the future. The cost of inaction is high, space needs are not going away and significant facility costs in the future regardless of the path. But the city's embarked on the federal building rehabilitation project, um, and a significant component of our plan to occupy the federal building is to ensure that we have the resources necessary. So part of this, part of the identity. Uh, state and local infrastructure partnership resources is that it helps move forward. Move towards completion, our ability. To do the rehabilitation. And, uh, note the difficulty of finding, of funding the project for traditional means. I mentioned not the thing that. Project. Move. General. Resources. Their credit services. City and so. Not surprising. Those. We didn't really need. Fire system. Water. Criteria. Between the project. Identified. And then I just wanted to note a little bit more about. As I mentioned in committee, uh, the biggest concern that we had was that expansion project. You have repair or rehabilitation of. Expansion of a, same issue gives rise to challenge on, uh, fire station. Building. Um, after discussion with the committee though, we went back to look and see if there were some great repair maintenance that would work in a. Easier way, uh, by using some of the resources from the state and local infrastructure. We had conversations with staff. And I think, you know, the way I would conclude is that there are some, while there's some smaller non-expansion elements to the project, we did. Telling a reason to recommend peeling off a subset, the state and local infrastructure allocation to fund those projects for a handful of reasons. Part of that is timing, part of that. Sort of question about the overall resource for that, that expansion. And it's clear to us in some cases, whether the, uh, the repair maintenance. And it's unclear to us in some cases whether the, uh, the repair maintenance project will. Will actually be. Part. And we will probably hear more about that during budget process. More, uh. That's the reason for this red line there is we had initially explored the possibility of submitting a prioritization list included first. And local government building and. And at this point, I recommend. Simply make. Prior. Built out. Just real quickly before I hand it over to John, I just wanted to mention some of the key elements for why the Engen building hits that local. State and local partnership, infrastructure partnership act sweet spot. The timeline is clearly within the window for completion. Shovel ready. Tending to move into rehabilitation or abatement and deconstruction spring or summer, summer this year with completion. Um, and the costs, while not completely known, we're in the middle of evaluating scope. Scope of that abatement and deconstruction process, but we feel quite comfortable that. The amount that we will need to invest is sufficient to allow us to take full advantage of the reason. This, uh, infus. Um, and with that, I think I'd like to just hand it over to John Adams who. More, uh, the detail on how federal.
Thank you, Eric. My name's John Adams. I'm the strategic projects administrator for the city of Missoula and I'm the. City's project manager for the John, John Engen Local Government Building. Uh, the city county together received title to what was then known as the federal building in January of twenty twenty-three. And it was the culmination of years of effort, good leadership and staff both. Remind you on the city side, it was really similar on the county, but on the city side, decision to obtain the Engen building was really driven by three. Belief. That co-locating with county would better government. Two, the belief that city-county acquisition was only clear path to saving the. And three, the under city. Is best. Good rest. Need. With regard to space needs, we all know that. And while we always strive to keep the growth of government slow and low. You double Missoula's population, it stands to reason that you're going to need more employees and space. Building to plow the streets, obtain and administer federal funding, patient improvements, all the other. We've almost doubled in size since city hall was last. Other space downtown to house employees. And if you would like. Cold in the winter and hot summer, you can come visit me in my rent. So, um, in twenty twenty-one, when we were. Final decision to acquire the, uh, the then Engen building, we looked at four ways to deal with space need. And the four we found, of the four we found that it would cost as much to continually seeing space and making ad hoc improvements at city hall as it would rehabilitate. And that both completely renovating city hall and building a new city hall, even aside. Were substantially more expensive than, uh, the first two options, first two IR. So the reality that we faced and a big part of why council elected to acquire and rehabilitating Engen building is that. We knew we were going to have to spend money on city facilities and it made a heck of a lot more sense to dedicate that funding to a forever built. Pressure rather than funneling those dollars into payments, a city hall that's the service. So in the wake of acquisition, right now, we have two things happen in these. First, local firm A and E design is taking us through master. This is essentially who goes where, when, and many of the macro decisions that will frame redevelopment. So for example, consistent with city and county green building policy, you're going to try to make the building all electric. What does that mean for power into the building, for distribution within the building, for backup power? That's just one of a gazillion questions that sorting through right wrestling with. At the same time, through what we're calling project. We're getting started on the things that we know we'll need to do regardless of what's next, necessary in order to make rational and cost choices. So for example, in some instances, we have lead-based paints. So that needs to be removed during caps. Primafacy. In other instances, in order to deal with arctic heating and plumbing systems wrapped with asbestos containing materials, we know we're going to need to do asbestos. Often we need to deal with lead-based paint or asbestos containing materials just to understand the building spaces layout. Turn helps us understand our mechanical and electrical data options. So. We have to knock down a bunch of historic stuff, systems, and then in some instances, there are things that are simply going to make sense. While we're dealing with same. Same building component. So we're still sorting through that. And for that reason, the project for budget one, uh, project, pardon me, pardon me, the budget project. Flux. Pretty much in line with what the CIP estimated we would need for the coming year, but because master planning, construction and abatement all interact with each other, we're still navigating the choices about. What we do now, what we hold off on, see if it's necessary or desirable later. So so costly. It's not a. So we anticipate that deconstruction slash demolition will be on the order of an additional one million dollars for the city as a minimum. But we're still unsure about a number of alternatives and whether they should tackle, whether they should. And those alternatives could really. So I think we'll have more clarity on this coming season. But as a first step, the combination of slip of funding, council approval for brownfields funding, we hope ask for in the coming months would get us a really good start. Funding project and taking care of those things that we know we need to do one way or another.
That completes our presentation. Uh, they're obviously available for comment council. And I know that.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation and we'll go ahead and, um, open it up to questions from council. Before we open up the public hearing and take public comment, are there questions from council? Counselor Becerra.
Um, thank you. I, I guess. A comment person that is that it would have been. Great to see the CIP list that you eliminated to get to these two projects. Um, but since these were the two that make the most sense for you to prioritize, I'm wondering, um, for the federal building. Um, would this cover the city's portion of what needs to be remodel, fixed? Um, is the county also applying for this grant to cover the county's portion of it? And then my other question has to do with the twenty-five percent match. Well, where will that come from for, for these projects?
I'll start. Um, I. Take the first, second question first, that the match will largely. In this case, our contributions in terms of the brownfield investment. These match, but city going to be, um, is really on the hook for our, our chunk of funding for this project. Not. Non-city revenues and funding stack beyond. Sort of maybe historic preservation grant funds for a few projects, you know, we'll have some infrastructure or, um, inflation reduction act resources that may be available for some of our. Electrification project. Um, but the scale of the project in general is such that we will have a. Investment that we're not meeting our twenty-four percent for the project, which is also one of the reasons that it. You know, is that in that Goldilocks zone, we have, uh, and will need to make significant city investment in the project. And so we're not about. Cutting it close on the twenty percent match. The first question. Could you remind me? Oh, yeah. Uh, so the, the county does not have access to the funds under the flipper app. Um, and I think I maybe mentioned this at the earlier, uh, hearing, but this originally originated as a county. Uh, funding bill during the legislative session and sort of morphed over the course of the session into a municipal, uh, local. Town cities funding. Um, so we're applying for these resources in, oh, to meet our funding, uh, goals for the project, but the county is also split. Project with us and is seeking its own resources and own funding source for, for it. And John may know more about whether they have any particular other grant of funding currently that they're currently seeking, but. Um, as far as it, as it relates to the state and local partnership act, this is resources cities eligible for. Help. Meet our funding up.
Right, Counselor Carlino?
Um, since we're using the brownfields on a, what is it that we're, are we cleaning something up there? What, what exactly is?
Certainly are. Um, so there's a few other random things, but it's mostly asbestos containing materials and lead-based paint, so ACM and LVP. So when you think about a building that was constructed over the course of a hundred years. The lead-based paint alone is staggering, right? Hundred twenty thousand square. So by state law, you have. Can impact it. So any. Best incident. Would. Fry up. Say. Sim. Ceilings. Set aside.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Basika.
Thanks. And, um, my math may be incorrect, so apologies in advance, but, um, so the twenty-five thousand dollar match would be about two hundred and fourteen. And that's on top of the, um, eight hundred. Yeah, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So that will only add up to one million seventy-one or almost one million two thousand. But the bit, the abatement bid was about one, two. So what were the additional like?
Um. Trying to think of the easiest way to answer this question because part of the, part of the challenge is we don't, we don't have the particulars on the specific. Um, specific total for project one. Um, and so it's a little hard to know exactly what the twenty-five percent match is. The twenty-five percent is actually for the project. So. Say it's three thousand, three million dollar project split between the city and the county. County. That, and I gotta do math on the fly, uh, is, is, you know, one point five million. Twenty-five of. Project. Coming from the city. So it's essentially to prevent you from using all grant funds without any skin in the game, uh, for local communities. Um, and so really, like I said earlier. This, our problem here is not that we don't have enough city money. That we, that we have so many external resources that we are able to cover more than seventy percent of the project without. City. So you're already talking about brownfield commitments of one point two million dollars. This is at the very beginning of the project. So I, like I said, I, without being able to give you a specific number that is going to be that, you know, what is the twenty-five percent number for the project one? Um, I'm not concerned at this point that we're going to be able to meet that, um, under our current, with the current needs for that project.
Okay, I understand. And that's all of these.
It's, it's.
Good clarifying question. Thank you. Are there other questions from council? Not seeing any here in the room, and I don't believe we have anybody online. I don't believe Ms. Savage has joined. Okay. Great. So then that wraps up our questions from council. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and take public comment. Um, and so we'll go ahead and start that now. Please come on up, identify yourself by your name, spell your, spell your last name, please. Um, if willing, what part of town or what ward you're in, just, um, to help that. And then, um, keep comments to three minutes. I'll, I'll time you to be.
Like I have. Uh, my name is David. I'm glad you. Historic. Eric building. Court. Been did out. Dark tech. But.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gray. Are there others? On up.
Hello? I'm Mike Wilson. Don't really wish to identify the ward I'm from. So this is kind of dissonantly, distantly related to all of this, but, uh. Kind of think we should bring our attention report because in Montana, unlike other states, it's not regulated, uh, with general aviation, at least smaller aircraft. Other states dump your fuel when you're testing your air, uh, dump it somewhere where it's not on the ground. And, uh, you're dumping your fuel and you're. Like water in it. Just dump it on the. One gallon. So if we're. I think this is something. We need to mimic other states that regulate this and make sure we're not dumping this on the ground and make sure that we, uh, follow their lead. And do what's best for all of us, because I think over time this is bad. There's a airport for.
Mr. Wilson, I'm sorry to interrupt your public comment, but this is public comment on this particular agenda item. And so your comment on items not on the agenda will be taken in a little bit.
Okay.
Absolutely. You bet. Are there other public comments on this agenda item this evening? Not seeing any in the room. How about online? Is there any public comment on this agenda item online? I'm not seeing any there. Okay, great. So then we will go ahead and close the public hearing and, um, ask for. Uh, me? Ask for a motion. Be made. Gosh, are we in budget and finance? What, what committee are we in here? No committee, this just came.
Uh, public safety, health, city. Is where this.
He's shocked. So we have vice chair. Great. Counselor Basika.
I was not prepared. Um, all right.
You got this.
Um, so the recommended motion is to approve the administration's proposed funding priority list located in the referral for the state local infrastructure partnership act. And direct the mayor to transmit priority list to the Department of Commerce as part of the city's application.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So is there any council discussion on the motion? Counselor Jones.
Um, thanks for all of the work. Say thank. Just wanted you to look. Issue a bit more. And it sounds like it's, doesn't really match up there. I'm glad we're thinking about it. Been out there numerous times. It's a huge. Town. Fun one way or the other. So anyway, thank you for going through that analysis, um, but in the meantime.
Thank you. Other, yeah, other discussion. Counselor Basika.
I, um, also want to, um, mention.
I also want to mention there, there is a need for the animal shelter as well. Just adopted a dog in January from the animal shelter and seeing all those puppies all cooped up in there and all the other animals. It's getting a little out of control about how crowded it is there. So I agree with colleague. We need to look into that. Then I also am curious about the, um, the public commenter. I mean, yes, that was a very law or very distant correlation to this, but it does have, what you're talking about does have a lot of yes, issues that have to do with all of Montanans and the rest of people on the United States. If the gas really does get in there as much as you're stating, then I am really curious about that. So if I would look forward to having you email me some information.
Great. Thank you for your comment. Other councillor comments on this agenda item? Right. Not seeing any then. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble, we are ready for
All right. Take a roll call vote on the state local infrastructure partnership act, funding priorities, beginning with Sarah.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan? Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Ms. Savage is absent this evening.
And Vazika?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Great. All right. And that passes. Thank you very much, everybody. We'll move on to the next public hearing, which is item 5.2. This is an ordinance extension, the city interim urgency zoning amendments to title 20, complying with the 2023 state legislation. And so we'll go ahead and open this up for our staff report. And I see that Madison Mathias has joined us. Are you, are you our staff report this evening?
Yeah. All right. I mute myself. Just taking a second. Okay. Um, thank you for all of your time. My name is Matt Mathias and I am an associate planner on the long range planning team. Um, I'm in front of you today because community planning, development and innovation is posing an extension to the interim urgency zoning ordinance that amends title 20 zoning code was passed October 16th, 2023. The amendments in the ordinance brought title 20 zoning code language and compliance, seven bills passed by the 2023 Montana state legislature. And they specifically affected city zoning and were in effect by October 1st. So we propose today to extend the ordinance amending our zoning code so that it may maintain alignment with state law. So to reiterate, this urgency ordinance was adopted by city council on October 16th, 2023, to be in effect for six months, including April 16th, 2024. Uh, city council may now adopt by thirds majority vote to extend this interim, interim urgency ordinance 12 months, including April 16th, 2025. So at this time, the proposed ordinance staff report are published on Engage Missoula and the legal ad notifying this hearing was run in the Missoulian on Saturday, March 6th. As a refresher, interim urgency zoning ordinances are allowed by the Montana code annotated section 76 to 306. This permits cities to amend land use allowances without following the procedures otherwise required prior to the adoption of zoning. These exceptions include allowing for ordinance adoption without a 30 day period between adoption and effective date, and they reduce the requirements for public participation and engagement. This interim urgency ordinance has allowed for rapid alignment of our codes to protect public health, safety and welfare. It has accomplished many changes, including full compliance with state statutes consisting in part of the prohibition of certain design standards and processes, as well as the reduction of parking requirements for certain use. Again, 12 months by then the city will have adopted a reform code through the Armazula process. Additionally, this interim ordinance cannot be amended as a part of the extension. It may only be either approved or denied. Please see this table on the slide before you. This is a reference, a guide summarizing which title 20 chapters have been affected by this ordinance and which bills affect each chapter. Descriptions of the exact changes that title 20 are listed on this slide, including explicitly allowing microbreweries to co-locate with retail beer and wine sales under certain conditions. We increased the maximum children and adults allowed from 12 to 15 in residential daycares and concurrently set a new maximum of 16 children and adults for daycare centers. We've added new definitions for data center, digital asset mining and home digital asset mining, and have permitted these outright in M2 heavy industrial districts and conditionally in M1 limited industrial districts. We now have allowed places of religious worship to accommodate temporary overnight visitors for no more than 75 days. We now require one vehicle space per unit for multi dwelling buildings and commercial districts excluding the central business district, CBD. We have repealed parks and trails requirements within TED standards, repealed noticing requirements from the TED review process and repealed all references to conditions of approval for TEDs. And finally, we feel the design review board included provisions, transferring design review authority and have removed or revised design standards unrelated to public health and safety. So at this time, staff recommend the following motion be adopted by the city council, and this must be confirmed by two thirds vote in order to be adopted. Again, this extension of the interim zoning ordinance shall be applicable to the chapters listed on the slide in title 20. They'll be effective for one year commencing April 16th, 2024, during which time the city council will contemplate permanent zoning ordinance amendments to title 20 through the code reform effort. So I appreciate your time and attention. I am here along with several members of my team to hear your comments and answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mathias. Okay. Questions from council? And I see councillor Nugent has his hand up. Please.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Thank you, Madison. I want to reiterate something you brought up and then asked a question. You mentioned that tonight our only options are to vote to extend or basically vote not to extend. We cannot amend this because it was, we are basically extending was originally voted on last year as an urgency ordinance, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So there are several comments we've received in regards to particular pieces of this emergency or urgency ordinance. Is it safe to assume that those are going to be shared with the code reform team and the consultants to, for consideration in the broader code reform project?
Yes, absolutely. We are tracking all of the comments we get as a part of the extension of the interim zoning ordinance and then the comments we've received on what is next on the agenda. Um, those amendments and those are all being added and summarized in the comments and engagement for the Armazula process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that clarifying question. Appreciate that. Are there other questions from council members? Okay, not seeing any then. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on item 5.2. Again, that's an ordinance extension, which is the city interim urgency zoning amendments to title 20, complying with the 2023 state legislation. Are there any public comments on this agenda item this evening? Come on up, Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Actually not trying to be a pain in the butt, but I do think it's really important for Equus, Pennsylvania, Missoula. My name is David Gray. I'm act ward three. Um, so SB 507, well, I don't think this ordinance I think it rushed in the beginning. It was given to city council two weeks after state law was already and they crammed it through to get changes done and to comply with during that conversation we had with there was a bunch of and, and the it tried to press where our five months later stuff this ordinance. Um, I have a copy SB 407 and a line that was added to it, number two, local design review standards posed by a local government, a clear objective and necessary to protect public health or safety or to comply with title 20 is build design for aesthetic. First, that have been worked into the code about 12 years. Zula is seeing the crisis in the housing that has, has it increased and the cost. And every time a new building with asked, building that was built, these is all thing rent just need to so some of the things I've brought up past deck 12 10 foot ceiling height. Residential obscenely. I have apartments now that tend have two packs plus three cabinet. When the apartment don't have one heat one cabinet. Really cold. Provide heat or cooling anymore. The cabin heater takes so the explosion ability bills that the has to pay the amount of easing they are the loss of privacy mental unit because of rules I would recommend you put this as need to be taken care of and then bring that up for this current fires and a half doctor. Good. If you can't amend this, if you can amend this, it would be great because this one does a lot of really, really false. I found out today, I shared it with like tri affective, really bad. Have pyramid lump closed because of course nonexistence too expensive, sealy. Ozenberg closed. And I just found out today that no new units can be added in Lolo because there's sewer and water system is back. And so we tipping over the edge of ever having attainable. Please address that medially.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gray. Are there other public comment on this agenda, this agenda items?
I just wanted to expand on what he was just saying.
Just identify your name for the record.
Oh, yeah. That's, my name is Mike Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
So just to expand on what you were saying, I, I think the housing crisis. If I wanted to try to fix this and I had the power to do it, I would just say, look, anyone who is not resident of the state is not allowed to have a short term rental. If we were to outlaw this, Missoula or the state, I think would maybe drive the prices down. And suddenly there would be lots of houses going up sale because people have a choice. They can either move here and I think people moving here from other states is great. It's good to have diversity. It's good to have people from other areas bringing their culture with them. But what's not great is having out of state investment. Buy your land and make it difficult to live here to go with themselves at an economic price. One of the things that made Missoula so great that you could afford to live and work and not be in a top pack, right? Good job. Really. Whereas these days I kind of feel we're selling out. We are catering to people who have a great deal of money to spend, the money to invest. And this is becoming a place where people can invest their money, make a great deal. It's like, we're a place for tourism. It's, uh, it kind of breaks my heart. But I think if we outlaw out of state investment, short term rentals, that will maybe drive the prices down. And for people who have a great deal of real estate, I don't think that's really going to be in their favor because their portfolio is going to suffer. But we care about the needs of many. I think this is a good move. A lot of people will be happy and their ability to live here is fine. That's just my guess. I, I've mentioned this a few times now. I really hope you guys will put serious consideration into making sure that people from out of state cannot invest. Those, like I said, actually live here and become residents, kind of like out of state tuition. Yeah, let them come here. And if they want to, maybe if you guys are worried about, you know, budget deficits such, you could make it so they can have short term rentals here, but it's but whatever we do, I think we should really be thinking best interest of the people who choose to live here because they love it. Just
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wilson. Slightly, uh, uh, adjacent to the agenda item, one thing I'll mention, um, just for the record is that much of what you discussed tonight is actually controlled by state legislation. Um, and so we can be a resource for you to help, um, um, share in some of that because there is, um, a lack of local jurisdictional ability to make some of those choices. It actually is a bit of constitutional issues in the state of Montana. So uh, yeah, it is interesting, but just thought I would, um, articulate some of the challenges we face as a local jurisdiction, um, with some of the outside forces that do impact our housing market. You bet. Um, is there other public comment on this, which is the urgency ordinance? Any other public comment in the room tonight? Okay. How about online? Any public comment online? Great. Mr. Nugent, can you help? Do that, Ms. Jones?
Hi. Come on. Name's Elisa Wade. I'm a long-term resident of Missoula and that's okay. So I probably coach your kids soccer or biking. Uh, I just wanted to say I really appreciate the change in this rule. I know it can't fix all the problems, but a long-term resident trying to figure out how to get a, a desk in my kid's room and still be able to, we live in a really tough house. We're trying to figure out how to move forward. That we are really appreciative of any changes to the non-conforming rules that are really limiting. We've been really stuck trying to make it work in our, in our hometown. So I know this doesn't fix everything, but appreciate a few changes that make it work for a lot of Missoulians who are just everyday citizens. So thanks for all you do and appreciate you thinking about the business.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Wade. Are there others online? Okay. Not seeing any additional public comment. Then we, um, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and we will take a council motion before council discussion. Councillor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Let's get the long ones here.
Exactly.
I move pursuant to Montana municipal interim zoning statute MCA 76 dash two dash 306. I move council adopt an ordinance that extends for one year, ordinance 3723, an interim urgency zoning measure amending title 20, Missoula city zoning ordinance, chapter 20.01 introductory provisions, 20.05 residential districts, chapter 20.10 business and commercial districts, chapter 20.15 industrial and manufacturing districts, chapter 20.20 open space, public and aviation districts, chapter 20.25 overlay districts, chapter 20.40 use and building specific standards, chapter 20.45 accessory uses and structures, chapter 20.60 parking and access, chapter 20.65 landscaping, chapter 20.75 signs, chapter 20.85 review and approval procedures, chapter 20.90 administration, chapter 20.100 terminology and chapter 20.105 use classifications to incorporate regulations concerning legislative changes to state land use regulations.
Well done. Thank you. Appreciate that. That was long, but it's on the record. All right. So is there council comments or discussion on the motion? Okay. Councillor Vazika?
I guess I have a quick question. Um, the comments that one public commenter came up with, uh, the deck size requirements, the ceiling height requirements, the glazing requirements. Um, I guess I'm just really concerned about those requirements and the affordability of, um, housing developments that occur with all those requirements. So that being said, what are the legal implications of this, um, yes, addition of having this emergency ordinance happening here further? Are there any legal implications of this not passing?
Thank you for your question. All right. We've got a number of folks as part of the CPDI staff. Um, which of you would Um, which of you would like to take back to?
Great. I will start if that's appropriate. Um, absolutely. So. The question at hand is the legal implications. Um, that would be that we would be out of compliance with the um, state zoning code, so to speak. Uh, we'd be out of compliance with the Montana code annotated until we either came into compliance with um, complying with these bills specifically. Or in the future with the um, new Montana land use planning act, um, that would negate some of uh, it would negate compliance with bills because you are complying with a new land use bill. Um, a little bit tricky, but yeah, at that time, uh, if we did not pass that, be out of compliance and open to lawsuit or um, not. Um, administering the rules from the state.
Okay, are there, are there other staff members that wish to add to Madison's response before we move on to the next question? Okay, all right. Counselor Nugent, would you like to add to that?
Yep, um, the public comment I believe is not that. We are adding things. It's that we're not removing enough things. So if we let this expire. None of the things that were questioned the public comment per um, those would need to be a separate legislative act. Would you have further questions? I'm happy. But it it's not an either or for approving or not extend.
I understand. Thank you. I appreciate the answers.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Jones?
Um, I've just got a question for staff missing and I just want to make it clear. Uh. For building residential, these. Glazing and ceiling height requirements are only on commercial corridors that are under our design excellence project. That a lot of these, this is not applying to residential in other areas, correct? That makes sense?
Yes, that is correct. Um, yeah. So the specific design standards that were amended. Um, they relate to um, design excellence specifically, those glazing requirements um, that that were mentioned earlier. I believe that's the commenter was referring to is design excellence project.
I just wanted to clarify, this is not citywide. This is a very narrow application. Civil court. Laval.
Yes. I was gonna say street facing on borders.
Um, Bell means with the planning off. Did the. It. There are. Sign next. So. Stand. Um, it's in a. Um, and when weighted the amendment, we brought in October. Those. Buildings. At the. Project, but our goal. Then is to comply with.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Are there other questions? Or discussion? Wait, we're on. Wrong, wrong comments. Thank. Good to get clarification. Other council comment? All right. Not seeing any, then we can go to a roll call vote on item five point two. Ms. Trimble, we are ready.
Right. Not going to read it again. On the interim urgency zoning amendments, title twenty, item five two, beginning with Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino.
Yeah.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan. Else.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Sika.
Yes.
And.
Yes.
And that passes nine in favor and none opposed.
Great. Okay, that item passes. Thank you to the staff for the presentation and for the public's comments on that. Um, we'll go ahead and move on to item five point three, which is title sixteen, presentation manufactured housing and mobile home parks. Um, Ms. Gress is not available this evening and Ms. Means you had um, said who would be presenting and I believe it's uh, Cassie Trippard who has joined us online.
Correct. Can you all see my screen?
We sure can.
Great. So I'm Cassie Trippard, a planning supervisor with community planning, development and innovation. Staff are recommending an ordinance to amend title sixteen, which regulates manufactured housing and mobile park. In this presentation, I will cover the project goals and considerations for this set of amendments. I will summarize the proposed amendments and then cover comments received from the public and agencies. This project was initiated by Montana House Bill two hundred forty six. This bill amended the definition of manufactured housing and changes to title sixteen are necessary in order to comply with state law. Staff occasionally permit replacement of manufactured housing in existing mobile home parks. However, it's very rare that we receive a request for creation of a new mobile park. For this reason, title sixteen has not received much attention in recent years. Since title sixteen needs to be amended due to House Bill two forty six, this was a good opportunity to correct all of the code conflicts and outdated references. The focus was not on rethinking how we regulate manufactured housing and mobile home parks, but rather to ensure that the regulations are functional and transparent. Having a clean, workable set of regulations will prepare staff to consider how mobile home parks are regulated with. Manufactured housing is typically a more affordable housing option than traditional site built structures. One goal of the amendment is to ensure our processes are equitable across development. The amendments aim to create predictability in how manufactured housing is regulated, eliminating conflict between regulations. Uh, allows for a more efficient permitting process. There were a few code sections that stood out as clear barriers to manufactured housing. The proposed ordinance includes targeted removal of these barriers. The amendments promote use of this more affordable housing option in alignment with the city strategic plan, uh, housing and equity line. Uh, Montana House Bill two forty six became effective on October first, twenty twenty three. The bill was primarily targeted at allowing development of tiny homes. Since tiny homes are often constructed offsite, they are considered manufactured. Bill amended the definition of manufactured housing and this definition is listed in the portion of title sixteen. That regulates manufactured housing placed on independently owned building site. By independently owned building site, I mean a regular lot outside of a registered mobile home park. When someone places one manufactured housing unit on a lot outside of a registered mobile home park, title twenty zoning code regulates the unit the same as site built detached house. For this reason, no changes to title twenty zoning code were required to comply with the bill. The new definition removes several requirements. Prior to the state bill, manufactured housing outside of parks had to be built after January first nineteen ninety to be permitted. Now the home just needs to have a certification plate from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development or HUD for short. HUD began certifying manufactured homes in nineteen seventy six, though without the nineteen ninety date and the definition, nineteen seventy six becomes the default date. The state definition used to require a minimum dwelling unit size of nine hundred square feet, and this has been removed as well. The amendment removed the requirement for a pitched roof and for siding and roofing materials customally, customarily used on site built home. Overall, House Bill two forty six eliminated several barriers to manufactured housing. As I mentioned earlier, most of the amendments relate to removing existing conflict with other regulations. For Montana code annotated chapter seventy six, the definition of subdivision includes the division of land that provides two or more permanent spaces for recreational camping vehicles or mobile. The parcels may be sold, rented or leased. This means that in order for someone to place two or more mobile homes on a parcel, the developer has to go through the subdivision process to create a mobile home. The subdivision process includes, but is not limited to review of the mobile home lot, utilities, roads, recreation areas and parks. The city subdivision regulations includes requirements for creating a mobile home park. In many areas, title sixteen contains redundant regulations that directly conflict with the subdivision, subdivision regulations. In terms of development standards and stuff. The subdivision regulations are more logical and paint more complete picture of the process. The amendments remove all of the conflict from title sixteen and refer back to the subdivision regulation. Some examples of direct conflict include allowable density, road and sidewalk standards, recreational area requirements and setbacks. Title sixteen currently states that new mobile home parks must rezonate RV one, which is a district from the city's old zoning code, old zoning code title eighteen. Title twenty, our current zoning code has an RMH zoning district for residential manufactured, residential manufactured housing park. The amendment refers or references the current applicable zoning code and district. Mobile home parks are regulated by the city county health department. The health department implements the requirements of Montana administrative rule thirty seven. Title sixteen required a fifteen foot separation between mobile homes. However, the health department requires and implements a twenty foot separation. The proposed amendment align with titles or align title sixteen with the health. Title sixteen currently requires service buildings like communal bathroom facilities for all mobile home parks. These types of facilities really aren't necessary in traditional mobile home parks where each dwelling unit has independent facilities. The health department only requires these service buildings for dependent units like an RV park or KOA style development, where each unit does not have its own. This section of title sixteen is proposed to be removed, leaving regulation of service buildings to the health park. The amendments remove standards for parking space dimensions, paving, curb scudders and side. Standards for all of these features already exist in the subdivision regulations, regulations. Title sixteen references outdated federal standards for installation of mobile homes. This reference is proposed to be updated in current standards which are HUD, auto manufactured home installations. These HUD standards include provisions for foundation types, footings and pier. Title sixteen had requirements for all of these features which are outdated. These requirements are proposed to be cut from title sixteen and the regulations would refer back to the HUD standard. There are a few amendments that address administrative changes to reflect current city processes. This includes using the term city council instead of the zoning commission since subdivisions are approved by city. Business licenses are no longer processed by the treasurer like pedal sixteen suggests, so this is corrected. And last, the jail penalty is removed from the violation sections since it does not reflect current city. I mentioned earlier that there were a couple code sections that stood out as clear barriers to creating mobile home parks in Missoula. The first is the requirement that mobile home parks are located on arterial streets. These are Missoula's main roads, which are often commercial corridors. Mobile home parks must go through the rezoning and subdivision processes, which include review of transportation and traffic impact. Rather than having a blanket requirement for mobile home parks to be on arterial streets. The amendments just require access from a public street in alignment with the city subdivision regulation. We have processes in place to evaluate the adequacy of roads for this type of development. The second barrier is a requirement for mobile home park to be at least ten acres in size. Ten acres is a fairly large parcel considering a mobile home park could contain as to be with two dwelling units. The amendment removes this requirement relying on the density standards and the subdivision regulations to dictate how many units may be permitted on parcels of different size. Title sixteen lists uses permitted in mobile home parks, even though this is handled by the RMH zoning district of title twenty. An amendment clarifies that uses allowed by title twenty are permitted in mobile home park. Last, the amendments I covered in previous slides also eliminate barriers to producing manufactured. Uh, we have not received any new public or agency comment since this item was that land use and planning committee. To recap, CPDI only received three comments on the proposed amendment. The CPDI housing division of community planning expressed support for the amendment. Staff received a comment from DVG architecture as well. This comment included a few questions and some suggestions. Two of the suggestions are regulated by state law, so we cannot implement them at the local level. And the last suggestion related to parking requirements for mobile. So at this time, at this time, staff recommend Missoula city council adopt an ordinance generally amending title sixteen, manufactured housing and mobile home park. Thank you. I'm happy for questions or here for questions if you have them.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Trippard. Are there questions from council on item five point three? Yes, Counselor Carlino.
Yeah, I think I've got three. Um, I was wondering with the change from the fifteen feet between each um, mobile home to twenty feet. I know you said it came from the health department, but what is the reasoning? Because that'll make sure we can't fit many.
That is a health department requirement. I'm not entirely sure on why they landed on twenty feet and they are implementing state law. Um, it is larger than the required separation for fire rating, but that is something we could ask them, but it's not something that we can change here uh, at the city.
Thank. Good. Um, are we, maybe this is for the city attorney possibly, but are we able to amend um, in this to get rid of the parking mandates for mobile homes? Or um, does that need to be done in title?
Um, we could amend it through title sixteen for manufactured housing on regular lots. However, we can't amend it for new mobile home park because that is in the subdivision regulations, which are not being amended at this time.
Um, and then I just had one more question. Um, I was just wondering um, for this uh, for the penalty, um, why uh, for um, see. Um, if if people are violating this title, it says they should be guilty of a misdemeanor. I'm wondering why a misdemeanor instead of like a. Municipal practice.
I don't know if we have someone else present who can answer that. This amendment was recommended to us by Marty Abineau. She left. I'm like, I'm guessing it follows other city practice.
Let's see, City Attorney Worthington, are you online for uh, response to Counselor Carlino's question?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So off the top of my head, all of our ordinances are municipal, um, I'm sorry, are misdemeanors. And I think in talking to to Ryan Sudbury, there have been some changes in title twenty. Um, where they have made them uh, uh, municipal infractions. But the majority of it so far of all our ordinances are misdemeanors. So I think that that is just something that's been there longstanding. We could look at at trying to change that.
Thank you very much for your response. Other counselor questions? Right, none in the room? Great. So then we will go ahead and open item five point three, title sixteen, manufactured housing and mobile home parks. Uh, to open a public hearing, so welcome public comment on this agenda item. Start with folks in the room. Is there any public? Not seeing any in the room? Is there any online? Not seeing any online. Okay. Well, that's a pretty quick public hearing. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and then um. go ahead and take a session tonight. Messed that whole up. We already, we've, no, we have not. We are ready for your recommended motion.
Thank you, Mayor Davis.
You bet.
I move Missoula City Council adopt an ordinance generally amending Title 16, manufactured housing and mobile home parks, Missoula Municipal Code, to incorporate revisions in the following chapters. 16.02, manufactured housing, 16.12, licenses and certificate of occupancy, 16.20, site plan review, 16.24, site and development standards, 16.28, standards for mobile homes, and 16.32, violation.
Thank you, Councillor Nugent. So a motion is on the floor. Is there counsel discussion on the motion? Not seeing any? All right. Then we will go ahead and move to a roll call vote for item 5.3. Is Trimble ready?
All right. Motion was just read on item 5.3, beginning with.
Yeah.
Palmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Nelson?
Yes.
Gent?
Yes.
Seaco?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Campbell?
Yes.
And that's unanimous.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, that takes care of item 5.3, and so next we'll move to item 5.4, which is the second round of near-term Title 20 code amendments. We have a presentation this evening from Benjamin Brewer, and this are our interim conditional use regulations. Mr. Brewer, we're ready for you.
All right, thank you. Can everyone be and hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Right. Okay, well, hi, everyone. I am, my name's Ben Brewer. I'm a planning supervisor with CPDI, and I'm going to be presenting on these second round of near-term code amendments related to our zoning code. Just before I start, I want to give a quick shout out to our coworker Jen Grass, who, as you might have noticed, was on the agenda for tonight and unable to make it. She came down with something pretty nasty, and I'm filling in with for her tonight, but we owe a lot of where we are today to her work, so sorry to not have her here. Tonight's presentation is on the second round of the near-term code amendments to the Title 20 zoning code, including those related to conditional uses. I'm going to go through the background, including related goals and sideboards, as well as the amendments themselves for both projects. You should all have a copy of the proposed amendments for both of these items. Tonight's presentation is not going to address each amendment individually, but it will summarize them generally, and then if anyone has questions about specific amendment language, we can dive into that and bring that up as needed. I'll also share out comments that we received, and finally, provide the motions for you to consider whether to adopt or not the recommended changes. We've broken this presentation out tonight between two sets of amendments. The first set includes what would be new changes to the zoning code if adopted, and then the second set includes changes made to conditional use, conditional uses specifically, which were adopted previously through an interim ordinance that we're proposing to adopt on a permanent basis tonight. So we'll run through the new amendments first and then follow up with the conditional use-related amendments after that, and then provide motions for both sets of amendments together for you to consider at the end here. I just want to take a minute to explain our goals and sideboards around these amendments that we're bringing tonight. We have from the outset of the Armazula project, which is our current effort to update the city growth policy and provide comprehensive code reform. We've been pointing to two main challenges which are listed here. One is our ability to administer effective and quality service related to the city's mission to promote equitable, sustainable, and quality service related to growth and development, and and the recognition that our codes often do not align with our vision and policies for growth. Another way of thinking about these is that, you know, one is more related to where do our codes misalign with other codes? And then also where do our codes misalign with our policies and our vision? And we think that we're addressing aspects of each of these considerations through these recommendations tonight. So as we talk through these amendments, as context, our starting point was to aim for two primary goals and what these might achieve. One is related to process improvements and delivery of service within our existing codes. That's to streamline our processes, establish greater clarity for code users, and provide necessary code cleanup. And then the other primary goal here is helping to meet the urgency that we know is in our community, especially related to housing supply, and looking at how might these changes bring on near-term results, even in the next year, while we work through the remainder of the Armazula project. This slide portrays the larger timeline around this work and locates these specific code amendments in relation to the Armazula project timeline. Following adoption of the first round of amendments back in October of last year, and now the second round of amendments that you're considering tonight, we hope to pivot from enacting individual targeted amendments, be able to put our full focus on the Armazula effort, which will result in a new equitable and innovative unified development code by the turn of the year. And just to note that we have made an effort to take, you know, measured incremental steps part of these near-term amendments, so as not to get ahead of the work and the community conversation that should occur through the larger Armazula effort. The timeline for these second round code amendments specifically is presented here, as well as the project website. If adopted tonight, these amendments would go into effect after 30 days, so go into effect towards the end of April. Public engagement for these amendments follows state law requirements and standard city practices, included advertising and holding agency and public comment periods, producing an online resource, following public notice and legal ad requirements, presenting and providing updates to the community forum, and monthly CPDI Development Community Meeting, and also holding a public hearing with the consolidated. As a reminder, here are the sideboards that staff use to identify the recommendations for these amendments. Essentially, we wanted to be aware of and sensitive to the comprehensive work occurring through the Armazula project, especially with regard to the space for community conversation and participation around values-based issues. And we want to make targeted and standalone changes that, much as possible, have unintended consequences. So now, now I'm going to go through the amendments themselves. The second round of near-term code amendments included, or include targeted amendments throughout Title 20 that will support new housing development, improve the efficiency of the development review process that are implemented in our existing policy goals, and update our codes better aligned with these. These changes will create a new baseline that will be considered within the Armazula project workflow and complement the ongoing development of a new unified development code. The proposed amendments can be grouped into three categories generally, first of which are amendments that support housing. Changes have been proposed for the affordable housing option, the vertical mixed-use building type, and accessory dwelling units, and shared parking. Other changes have been grouped into two more categories, will simplify our regulations, including changes in the areas of setback, parking, and density calculations, as well as correcting and clarifying our current practices around various zoning officer opinions, the interior calculation of accessory dwelling unit, and allow the historic preservation officer to review for a preservation permit. And then the following slides will play more specifically the changes in each of the previously, or of these categories. So first, changes supporting housing begin with the affordable housing option. Proposed changes here will expand the housing option into more zoning districts than currently, allowing it to be used not just multi-dwelling residential districts, but also all business and commercial districts, as well as the M1R district, industrial manufacturing, that allows for housing as well. The amendment also proposes allowing the density bonus to be utilized for any residential building type permitted in those districts. The definition of affordable housing and the percentage tiers will be amended to match our standard practice, and applicants will work closely with the community development staff to come up with flexible solutions that will benefit the community. And one of the seven zoning officer opinions being codified here through this process will incentivize the affordable housing development option by clarifying the existing park production found in the parking chapter in the zoning that it applies to the entire project rate units as well as affordable use. The next category of changes incentivizes the vertical mixed-use building type, which is intended to be urban-focused. This building type is rarely used because of difficulties in meeting the required amount of commercial use area, the number of parking spaces, and the required general site. The changes proposed here will simplify the measurement technique required for space and provide an additional option to calculate the area by equating the commercial requirement to the ground floor space. A second amendment rests parking barriers as app, waive the parking requirement for the non-residential portion of a vertical mixed-use development. The area required to meet the general site landscaping requirement, Title 20, can also create a barrier to the use of this building type. The proposed changes here will entirely waive general site landscaping requirements or provide alternatives. Vertical mixed-use projects located in the downtown inner core, outer core, and hip strip overlay subdistricts and the design excellence overlay will not have to comply with general site landscaping requirements titled. In other areas, vertical mixed-use development is permitted. Those projects can choose to meet alternative landscaping requirements instead of providing landscaping in the amount of 15% of the parcel area. In an effort to simplify other portions of this building type, staff are proposing to change the floor-to-ceiling height requirement to a floor-to-floor height adjustment, making it a fixed building frame dimension rather than an interior dimension that could change over time. A second amendment to this section is included to address a suggested change received from public comment. The floor-to-floor measurement is proposed to change from 13 feet to 11 feet, 11 inches over concern for supporting energy-efficient development of space. One of the city's primary goals is to focus on providing housing, and proposed amendments related to accessory dwelling units will increase the minimum structure size allowed from 600 square feet that currently to 1,000 square feet. Another will remove limitation, maximum 40% gross floor area, primary dwelling unit, and a third removes the required 10-foot distance between the primary unit. And the last amendment, these studies would increase the allowed height of the accessory dwelling unit from 22 feet currently to the maximum height that the ADU would be built. These changes would allow more flexibility when building accessory dwelling unit and help increase housing. The shared parking section in the zoning will be amended by including residential uses in the nighttime or Sunday category, calculating the reduction of parking allowed use development. With the proposed amendment, residential and daytime uses can share up 90% of park remaining 10%, providing residents that may work on normal schedules or work from home. This option will encourage more mixed-use proposals by providing the opportunity to reduce required. It also supports the city's housing and equity lenses, allows for better use of land, and it can reduce overall amount of paving. Other proposed changes will simplify our existing regulations. One proposed amendment will allow existing residential structures that are close to a property line to expand straight up. So with the current regulations, mentioning situations would not be allowed to do that to expand because they would become non-conforming for setback. Many districts require the residents to be set back third the height of the building, and many structures sit too close to the property line to expand and still meet that third distance requirement. Removing the one-third requirement allows residents to expand up, and an amendment is also proposed to allow parking areas for multi-dwelling buildings to extend into the interior side setback, making it easier for infill development to provide the required park smaller infill lot. The change supports infill development while maintaining the intent not parking, or parking not being located between the principal building and the street. Another amendment will remove a 26-foot backup distance requirement for structures adjacent to an alley. This requirement administered by the Public Works Department and is no longer in force. Removing the section allows it to be administered by the Correct Division and prevents the main regulations. And the existing language to alter or ban existing non-conforming one-or-two-unit residential dwelling is confusing and complicated. The proposed change will simplify the process by allowing an existing one-or-two unit dwelling to expand straight up back to the height allowed by the base zone without increasing that is structure. And then the last two amendments here include simplifying approvals for a parking reduction, a density increase. Both of these options are currently permitted through an administrative review process. We're proposing here that they be moved from administrative, that they be moving, be moved to administrative approval to be available by right. The density increase and parking incentive administrative adjustments require a lot of staff time to complete a process. Isn't required by state law, projects end up being approved anyway. Changes to both options make them easier to find and will reduce staff review. This next group of changes are categorized to correct and/or clarify current practices, the bulk of which are codifying recent zoning officer opinions. Before getting to those, just run through these, similar to the parking amendment for the multi-dwelling building parking. They have a similar amendment for multi-dwelling houses with different building type. A description of floor area consistent with current practice will be included for accessory dwelling unit. And we'll clarify the floor area that it does not include areas shared with the primary dwelling unit. Another amendment proposes changes to the review and approval section, making it clear that the Historic Preservation Commission only has authority to use historic preservation permits for projects locally designated as historic or ones that are listed on the National Register. Additional amendments that we're proposing make it clear that the Historic Preservation Officer has the ability to make termination to those permits that will not be reviewed for preservation. And then beyond these amendments, there are a variety of proposed changes to codify the recent zoning officer opinions. So occasionally, staff need to make an interpretation of existing regulations and want to formalize those opinions. Staff will review and research the topic, ultimately get the city attorney to approve their conclusions. At that point, it creates an official interpretation of the regulations, and it should be codified into the zoning code, and the following couple of slides cover amendments proposed to codify seven different zoning officer opinions that have been created over the last few years. One zoning officer opinion 22-01 is clarifying parcels with an existing steep portion and a flat portion are exempt from the hillside protection standards in applicants' building in disturbance area, not from the steep portion of the parcel. 2202 clarifies affordable housing parking incentive, included in the affordable housing definition is the assumption that some of the units will be market rate. In order to incentivize the creation of affordable units, the parking reduction needs to be applied to all the units posed, including the market rate units as well. So this amendment makes that clear. 2301 makes the regulations clear that home occupations are permitted in any residential unit in any Title 20 zoning district, as well as any approved land unit development special district. And 2302 clarifies parking structures, multi-dwelling buildings can be accessed by an alley or a street. However, surface parking, multi-dwelling buildings adjacent to an alley continue to be accessed only from the outside. Couple more of these here. Couple more of these here. Officer opinion 2304 provides clarification regarding zoning map boundaries in various situations. So first, zoning district boundaries lining with street, railroad, right-of-way easement, go to the center line of the easement. Next, the street and alley right-of-way parcel unzoned, even if the map shows them is zoned. And lastly, when street or alley right-of-way parcels are vacated, zoning district boundary extends to cover the vacated portions of the parcel it is due. So this zoning officer opinion is unique to the fact that it was never formally completed, but it was added straight into these amendments because of the timing of this amendment package. Zoning officer opinion 2305 addresses amendments to the Missoula Development Park overlay zone. Plans similar requirements will be removed from the overlay but will continue to be required through the building permit review process. Required approved development park design review committee will be removed because that committee no longer functions. And lastly, we have one of these crossed out here. The amendment that was originally included around Officer Opinion 2306 related to microbreweries has been removed from the proposed ordinance as staff discovered that the zoning officer opinion language was already incorporated with slightly different language but meeting the same intent in the interim urgency and therefore not needed in this project. Since the interim ordinance cannot be altered, we have removed the proposed amendment from that amendment from this ordinance. So this explains why the number of amendments that you're considering tonight is down to 27 rather than the 28 that were presented to you in committee. So this concludes the list of new zoning amendments for your consideration tonight. The adoption process for these amendments has complied with state law requirements for public notification, and during our outreach, seven comments were received. The first two were received through Engage Missoula. Both comments were in support of proposed changes for accessory dwelling units. One comment recommended the removal of the regulation requiring accessory dwelling units not be located in the front yard. Common Good Missoula provided comments that generally support the amendments proposed, particularly those that could reduce more affordable housing and infill the move toward a city more accessible to all such proposed changes for the vertical mixed-use building type permanently affordable housing density section. They also advocated increasing the size of ADUs to 1,200 square feet in support of reducing barriers to vertical mixed-use. We received comments from a DVG architect that covered a number of things in the proposed amendments. Several of the comments focused on banning the amendments beyond the scope of this project and be considered through the comprehensive code reform process. Comments relating to floor area calculations, ADUs, and floor-to-ceiling height requirements for vertical mixed-use were taken into consideration and were included in the proposed changes here. IMED Corporation provided comments and expressed that in their opinion, the overall parking regulations for shared parking is confusing, and they propose different language to help make the section more flexible. Our focus in this round of amendments to shared parking is to focus on residential use in a mixed setting. The proposed changes be considered comprehensive code amendments as well. Public Works and Mobility provided comments supporting the addition of residential uses for the shared parking option, and Missoula County Land and Economic Development firm the Design Review Committee in the Missoula Development Park no longer exists. The planning board held a public hearing on March 5th unanimously recommended approval of these amendments. During that meeting, we were asked for clarity around the historic preservation amendments, the parking incentive for the affordable housing option, and why staff goes increase in size of ADUs to 1,000 square feet. Board members also wanted to know if short-term rentals would be addressed. A summary of those questions can be found at the East Tribe as well. Staff received a last-minute proposed change from the Park Department that we brought to LUP on the 13th. The change proposes adding language to Amendment Number 20, addressing the general site landscaping exemption for the vertical mixed-use building type. It does now appear in the public hearing ordinance attached to the East Tribe. The slide highlights the new language and addressing boulevard pedestrian space improvements. The language added clarifies class two trees to be planted in the boulevard area, and they require a specific soil volume, giving them a better chance of survival. This amendment also adds another option for flexibility in the boulevard area. Specifics on what soil volume is for class two trees be found in the Public Park Standards and Specifications Manual, and this change, along with removing the amendment related to the zoning officer opinion about microbreweries, incorporated into the updated ordinance provided for this public. This is the motion that you'll be considering around these amendments, and now I'll move on to covering the amendments related to conditional use. So the second motion for your consideration that is part of this agenda item is adoption of the conditional use amendment. Today, we're providing background information so you can consider adopting changes to the conditional uses found in Title 20. Discussion will cover proposed amendments, update zoning regarding uses allowed conditionally in specific district. I'll give some background here, view the amendments generally, and then I'll go over comments received and by the motion for your consideration. Back in 2021, the city of Missoula was facing historic levels development review causing backlogs and delays to being able to focus on key priorities. In light of demand, there was an urgent need to identify and supply regulations and profit. In order to do this, the city identified the goal to provide more effective delivery of city services by allowing for more streamlined review of certain types of use, thereby freeing up staff time to review and approve higher priority. The conditional use process landed on as it's the type of discretionary review that's not subject to the statement, the statement dated. Amendments to conditional use were first adopted as an interim ordinance in November 2022, under the consideration that Missoula was experiencing a housing crisis representing a threat to the community's general health, safety, and welfare. It was then extended for another 12 months in May of 2023, and now, after having taken the time to gauge the impact of these changes, the city is moving forward with adopting them into the zoning code on a permanent basis and as part of the second round of near zoning code amendments. Take a drink of water here for a second. Thank you. All right. So just as a reminder, the zoning code includes three basic use designations, permitted by right, unpermitted, prohibited, and conditional. And conditional uses require case-by-case review in order to determine whether that use is compatible with surrounding uses or development patterns based on certain criteria that are found in Title 20, and then ultimately they're approved by city council after a public hearing. When the interim amendments were passed in November of 2022, there were 47 conditional use. Following adoption of interim ordinance, 21 uses were removed as conditional entirely. 13 uses remained conditional and unchanged, and 13 uses were changed in some districts and retained as conditional. Currently, there are 26 uses that are conditional to some degree or enough. In developing these changes, staff considered some sideboards, which are listed here. In approaching the project, we originally, we first looked at the simplest pick. Could we just change all conditional uses to permitted wherever those uses are currently conditional? But after applying a set of considerations, staff determined that an across-the-board relaxation of conditional uses was going too far, and then in some cases, it was most appropriate to maintain some uses as conditional. And it also became clear that focusing on the uses themselves rather than some other approach, geographic, something like that, was the most intuitive way to proceed. As part of the process for determining which conditional uses could candidate for shifting to being permitted, staff felt considerations that are listed here on the left side of the slide. Not every consideration used, you know, to reach a decision for each use, but these were what we considered here. So we looked at the level of frequency. We looked at degree of controversy or perceived impact. We looked at policy alignment, additional support by other existing standards or codes. We looked for consistency in our approach. We looked for a relationship to the code reform effort. We considered complexity of the uses that we were evaluating, and we gave kind of special consideration how it might affect transitional areas. So along with these considerations, staff was guided by some assumptions as well, which are listed on the right. Only districts covered under Title 20 were what we evaluated. We didn't want to ban the range where uses are designated already. We didn't want to make any use more prohibitive than it already, than it was already. We looked at a few zoning district with a certain lens. The M1R district, we considered as more residential than industrial. We wanted to give special consideration to the CBD, to the downtown central business district, and we looked at all three of the B business zoning district with consistency. So following that, this is just to give an idea of what impact these changes have brought on over the last year or so since they were put into effect. On the left-hand side, the types of projects that have benefited from these changes since they were enacted includes the enterprise commercial use type, bakery, group living, daycare, and preschool, all uses that were previously conditional, at least in some places, and of a certain size, breweries. Then, you know, we've had various inquiries into potential projects that benefit from these amendments as well. And then just to call out that there are still some uses that are, that are conditional that we still are working through and see and have seen recently, and that especially includes the. So just to run through what the amendments were, again, based on applying criteria and assumptions, we landed on three categories of amendments, changing some uses from conditional to permitted in all, everywhere they were listed, basically removing them as conditional, changing some uses from conditional to permitted, distancing some districts, and then not changing them at all. So the following slides show the amendment generally indicating which of the three categories each conditional use ended up. If you have a question about the actual amendment, we can bring them up. I can show you what that looks like. And just to be clear, these changes are related to which specific zoning district these uses previously either permitted, conditional, or prohibited. So that's just to say these do not indicate across-the-board changes, these uses in every zoning district. The first category are those that were removed as conditional, so that includes the uses listed here, animal services, sales and grooming, and veterinary, auto wrecking, college university, community residential facilities above nine residents, day labor employment agency, fraternal organization, group living, junk and salvage, parade and cultural exhibit. And then also in the same category, manufacturing, both artisan and limited, micro brewery and micro distillery, the office use, personal improvement service, preschool centers above 13 students, cycling service, religious assembly school, residential support services, and the school use generally. This next category are those uses that are changed to permitted in some of the districts that they're listed in while remaining conditional in others. So that includes shelter or boarding services for animals, casinos, tech cashing and loan service, cideri, daycare centers above 13 students, emergency homeless shelters, enterprise commercial uses, and then continuing on in the same category, meal center, cavern, cavern or nightclub, vehicle sales and service, heavy equipment and storage and towing, winery, wireless communication facilities, and ground mounted for those. And then finally, the next two slides, those uses that were retained as they were, have not been changed. So that includes bed and breakfast, building maintenance service, construction, sales, and service, detention and correctional facilities, fraternities, sororities, gasoline and fuel sales, hospitals, parking, non-accentuary, residential storage warehouses, truck stop, travel plazas, utilities and services that are major in scale, car washes and cleaning services related to vehicle sales and service, waste-related uses, and water testing laboratory. So no comments have been received on these amendments during the second round of code amendments. The planning board passed the amendment recommended here unanimously. At that meeting, they wanted to know whether the conditional use changes have been impactful, and staff provided the background showing, even a previous slide, along with summary of questions documented at the East Tribe. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Really appreciate you being able to step up in that presenting and our best to. So with that, then we'll go to questions from council.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just going back, thank you for that presentation. First half of your presentation where you mentioned all my potential zones, but just to be clear, still necessitate someone.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Other questions in council? Councilor Carlino?
I'm wondering if we could get a little bit more information on the floor-to-ceiling height. We landed on 11 feet.
I'm gonna see if any of my team might be able to.
Great, we have Ms.
Help answer this question, David.
Lavelle Means is in the room. Thank you, Mr. Brewer.
From energy efficiencies, it'd be better if it didn't require such filling.
Right, not, oh, Councilor Vaseka.
Thanks. I was wondering what the historical background was for not allowing ADUs in.
Thanks. I was wondering what the historical background was for not allowing ADUs in front?
Yeah, I couldn't respond to that. ADUs are considered an accessory structure and that a kind of across the board typical standard for structures that are considered accessories, they're minimized on the on the lot and then from the from the street and so typically they are expected kind of a soon that they'll be located in the in the back lot or in the somewhere that is is not more prominent than the primary. Applied to accessory structures generally and included in the rules that we have.
That's what I kind of assumed. Thank you.
Other questions tonight? Okay. Not seeing any additional questions from council, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on both of these motions this evening. So if you wish to come up and deliver public comment on item five point four, please just identify your name, spell your last name and keep your three minutes. Time goes on. Network. Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Mason. Appreciate that. Other, other folks wish to deliver public comment?
Hi, I'm Lisa Davy, D A V E Y, and I'm the lead organizer of Park Common Good Missoula. And we really appreciate how well CNN and Brewer and Lavelle have all worked with us to really come through this. You know, we've been sitting here with you for the last two hours and it's hard to sit through and think about all the code. And we have teams of people spread out throughout the city who are reviewing this, are talking to their neighbors and are trying to figure out how this actually gets implemented. And so far, we have come into a very close climate with city staff. We've been able to bring our concerns forward. One place that we are in disagreement on the current motion is that we'd really like to see the square footage for ADUs expanded to be twelve hundred feet, one thousand two hundred. I mean, it might seem like a small thing, but one thing we're looking at is trying to have equity in our density throughout our neighborhood. And Lytech is only available to a couple of our neighborhoods taking quite a of density right now. And ADUs is one way to spread them out. If you increase the square footage from one thousand to one thousand two hundred feet, it actually makes it possible to use a two-bedroom garage that are in a lot of those newer developments. That's kind of a standard size that people build those two-bedroom garages to. So if you think about like developments up Linda Vista, that is easy then to take and put a second floor in and make an AD. The other reason for it is that we have heard over and over again about accessibility and not necessarily ADA standards, but being able to age in place and to have places be visitable. And the difference between a bathroom that's easy to use if you have a walker or wheelchair is about a hundred square feet compared to a typical bathroom. And so building those units so that people can age in place already adds that thousand square feet and then space in each of the rooms is another like twenty square. So that makes another eighty and so we're there right between that thousand and and so for, you know, hearing really over and over again through, you know, faith communities, our unions, our nonprofits and our neighborhood groups, that we really want our new places that we're creating to be accessible and visitable and to take advantage of what's already built in our community and be able to make closing. That's very important. It does also make, there's quite a few two-bedroom floor plans that are available at twelve hundred square feet that are very challenging to do at a thousand square. And it's set up for like a roommate situation. And so you can imagine that if somebody wanted to turn their garage into an ADU, having two bedrooms and possible roommates provides double the housing of an ADU. So we're asking you tonight to consider, we're hoping somebody will make a motion to amend your amendment. So an amendment on the amendment to just change that from a thousand square feet to twelve hundred square. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Davey. Appreciate that. There are others in the audience that wish to make public comment.
Great. We're So that would be sounded like question. Part. Question. But uh, but
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gray. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gray. Are there others in the audience that wish to make public comment tonight? All right, not seeing any in the room? Is there anybody online that wishes to make public comment? No, nobody online. Want to just raise your hand? Okay. Great, James Crosby, you are being unmuted. Should be able to go.
Okay, let's try that again. Thank you so much for taking my comment. Uh, Mr. Brewer, congratulations on an excellent presentation, a marathon performance being thrown in at the last minute. I was trying to find, during the Title 20 amendments, you mentioned eScribe as a resource to find some of the public comment regarding short-term use for ADUs and zoning. Can you provide additional direction to those comments or could you speak briefly to why we wouldn't include something about short-term use in these ADUs?
Mr. Brewer, if you wish to clarify for the public how to access eScribe, this seems like a good opportunity to do so.
Thanks, Mayor Davis. For one thing, eScribe is the program that we use to manage our agendas for these meetings. Basically, what you're, what we work through the on the city website on. So if you find the agenda for this meeting on the city meetings page is usually how I get there. That's what I mean by eScribe. But in regard to short-term rentals, there is not a specific comment around short-term rentals that we've received as part of this process. We were asked about it by the planning board as part of the conversation that we had following our, our meeting with, with them and we're, you know, there were questions about that brought up by, by one of the board members. So we, we talked about it at that meeting and basically, you know, what we said is something that we've talked when, when that topic has, has come up previously and with city council as well and committees related to these amendments and to the Armazula project, that that's a complicated issue and it's complicated how it ties in with our housing situation and I think it's best best evaluated and addressed through the comprehensive code reform effort that is being undertaken with the Armazula project.
Thank you for providing that clarification.
Thank you very much.
Okay, are there others online that wish to make? Any? Hey. Is that, we'll go ahead close the public hearing. We will ask agent to make counsel motion. I think we blew both of these at the same time.
It's an exciting L U P night.
It sure is. Your next.
Um, two motion. Move the city council adopt a city of Missoula initiated ordinance generally amending Title 20 Missoula municipal code, the city zoning ordinance to incorporate second round near-term code amendment revising the following chapter. Twenty point oh one introductory provisions, twenty point oh five residential districts, twenty point one oh business and commercial districts, twenty point one five industrial and manufacturing district, twenty point two five overlay district, twenty point four oh use and building specific standards, twenty point four five accessory uses and structures, twenty point five oh natural resource protection, twenty point six oh parking and access, twenty point six five landscaping, twenty point eight oh non-comformities, twenty point eight five review and approval procedures, and twenty point one zero zero terminology. Further move, the city council adopt ordinance adopting the temporary changes found in interim ordinance number three seven one nine as permanent and refer this them to the land use and planning committee, pre-public hearing informational item.
Red motion. You know, this is the second reading, so I do, thank you. I highlighted that with a question mark too. So Councilor Nugent, I believe we would strike that last part of the motion. Does that make sense?
Yes, let's just end it at ordinance number three seven one nine as permanent.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so both motions are we'll go ahead and ask for counsel comment. Uh, Councilor Carlino?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of good changes here that are going to help the housing supply in Missoula and a positive step forward. I appreciate everybody who's taking part in this and I do have a couple amendments, so I'll start with one that was brought up by that Common Good Missoula, um, folks. Thank you for advocacy and and I would like to move to amend twenty point forty five to change the accessory dwelling units to a maximum of one thousand and two hundred square feet instead of
Okay, so I will look to Councilor Nugent to see if that's a friendly amendment. He'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
I'm willing to accept as a friendly amendment. And we, since it was noticed or do we have to vote on it? Might have to ask somebody smarter than me in this room.
Thank you for asking that question. I am going to refer to Keith Worthington, our available question for us to see if you might have stepped off for a moment. See, you have something online? Okay. So we, next we'll look to our lead planner in the room and yeah, or maybe Claire. Claire, do you have, do you know if this is a land use item, if we're able to have?
I believe that's still appropriate. The, the substance of the issues we're voting on was really noticed. People had the I, I think it's up to take an amendment.
Thank you for double checking.
Then I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Right, so we now have amendment on the floor accepting, excuse me, accepting the amendment. Use of
Yes, I have one other amendment I'd like to pose. I'm open to lowering this to any amount, but I would like to move to amend that the floor to ceiling height be required at ten feet instead of eleven however many inches that it's currently written in here. I'd be happy to.
Um, I'll ask first if you're willing to accept that as a friendly amendment before.
I think that that's one that we're gonna need to vote on. I think we need
Okay, great. So Councilor Carlino, why don't you go ahead and speak to your amendment change and then we will ask council for a vote.
Yeah, I think, you know, right now we're in a climate crisis where the amount of energy that we're using needs to be rapidly reduced. We need to be, get rapidly off of fossil fuel energy sources as well when it comes to climate crisis. Requiring large excessively large rooms for as a one-size-fits-all for commercial uses, I don't think makes much because it requires a ton of extra energy and you're making, you're forcing people to build their first floor at at least eleven foot eleven inches, whether they want to or not. Why don't we allow people to save energy and be able to build the, the ceiling to floor height as something more reasonable? I propose ten feet as the requirement instead of what it's
Okay, thank you, Councilor Carlino. Do staff wish to provide comment in regards to the amendment prior to it going to council? Discussion. Lavelle, come on up. There's these This is coming giving us Or feeling is good if is that would
Uh, correct. Yeah, I meant my amendment be amend that to ten feet or to, or to
So that is pretty much. Changes of Because it is a predictable Thank you, Ms. Means. I appreciate that. I have a question, comment here from Um, I have a question, comment here from councillor Jordan.
Yeah, sorry, Ms. Means, if I could. Um, I'm just curious, if we set the, at a, a minimum ten to ten, ten would not obviously. All as they want. So if we, if we set the standard, it would give developers more of a choice to decide whether or not to pay for that, the extra supplies and the um, like utilities it's paid to keep. So it wouldn't necessarily make it harder for people to build things, to give them more codes to build little. Please, is that, that's just the minimum. Do you see any problem with setting a minimum like that? There, are there issues? Said. The, the love. Thank you for clearly. Thank you.
Other questions from council? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Mr. Brewer?
Um, thanks. Can, can I just add a little bit more context around this conversation too? Just, I think, I think something else to keep in mind is um, like Laval was saying, this is a very, it's a specific building type. Um, part of, I think the intent of, of creating that, that building type, which is, is different than mixed use in general. There's lots of different mixed use buildings that are not held to this ceiling height standard. Um, but this is one that's meant to um, bring around or bring, bring about a, kind of a more, um, what you would consider urban. And, and part of that goes along with that is that it includes an incentive that it is not held. So this is a building type meant to be pretty high, high density higher than you might achieve otherwise and, and the, um, floor to ceiling height, um, requirement is kind of paired with that to in, incentivize and pair with, with you would associate, uh, with, with having that, that more kind of urban building type where you would expect there to be a, a, a commercial, uh, element in the street, you know, that you're, you know, people that are also living there and uh, frequent and, and, um, you know, that's, that's able to serve that and, um, so just another consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brewer, appreciate that. Uh, other council questions? Ms. Becerra?
Yeah, question for Ben. Is this something that, um, we're looking into as part of code reform? And, and I'm only asking because if, if this is perhaps something that we have time to think about it, we don't have to make this amendment tonight and still be able to think about it and incorporate it as part of the code reform. That, is that right?
Um, yes, absolutely, absolutely. And I think it's a good example. I mean, this has really been a, um, a piece of this project that has brought up, you know, the types of, um, values-based, you know, we, we talked earlier about that values-based decisions that we want to make and need to make part of, um, developing the new code and there are, have interest in, um, you know, making energy conscious, um, decisions in our code and we have interest in providing the kind of spaces that we, that we, um, want to see our city grow, grow into and, and, um, and potentially change and, um, so, you know, this vertical mixed use set of amendments, they brought some of those out and certainly the, you know, and, and related to that building type, um, specifically as well as some continue to, um, to be looking at and developing further the code reform. Yeah, I froze there, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. We did get your full answer there. Councillor Nugent?
Um, thanks, I'm gonna can I ask a question?
That, absolutely.
Mr. Gray, can you think of an example of a building in that's this type of mixed use where there's some sort of commercial on the main floor housing above that has kind of a lower ceiling? Is there something that we? Thank you very much.
Are there other questions from council? Okay, not seeing any additional questions. This is one of those, we have two amendments. Well, let me clarify, we, we have one amendment and this is amendment that will need to be voted. Um, and would you go ahead then and make to amend that or?
I think, I think Daniel already made the motion, so I think it's on the floor.
Um, I think that we're okay to not take additional public.
I think, I think because we're voting on the amendment, we have to take public comment on the specific amendment because it's new and getting nods from people in the room.
Okay.
And then I think I have.
Got it, okay. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, public comment on, specifically on the ceiling height amendment. Sorry, yeah, floor to floor, sorry, floor to floor. A long night, sorry.
Ten foot, quarter, is. It allows far less. But you'll have. Very. Good. Ten foot tall. Upper residential. Why?
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Gray. Are there others that wish to comment on this amendment? Not seeing any, is there any online? No one online, okay. All right, check me, so I believe that we are ready to take city council comment before we take city council vote on the amendment, the amendment. All right, councillor Nugent, please.
Um, I, you know, I appreciate all the comments on that and I appreciate the thoughts from Mr. Gray and I appreciate staff. Um, I'm, I'm okay with this amendment. I think that what we're doing is providing choices to be made upfront and that it it allows buildings to have different levels of height and specifics that are, that can be decided, decided at I understand some of the desire to keep higher ceilings on the main level for potentially future commercial use, but I think that kind of is almost offset by we're creating extra space for people who are building buildings who may never utilize that. And ultimately, the developer is making the decision that's going to impact future value of their building because it's maybe a less flexible use on commercial space with a lower ceiling, but that was there too. So I, I'm.
Okay. Other council discussion comments? Okay, not seeing any, then, um, both of these, both Carlino's amendments are in. Is that correct? Are they? First. Mr. Carlino, can you identify? And we can always get staff to. Twenty forty is what I was thinking. Does that seem correct, Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, that, that should be correct, with use and building specific, um, standards, right?
Yes, it is. Use and building specific standards, that's correct.
Yeah, that would be the, that would be the one.
Okay, so to be clear for the record, then we have two amendments, one to twenty point five increasing accessory dwelling units, one thousand hundred, and then other to twenty point four zero under use standards, which then decreases the floor, or height to ten feet. Is that right?
I'm just gonna jump in here, sorry, we're, we're we might want to check that here, it might be in twenty, about one hundred, please give a.
Great, we have, okay, thank you, Mr. Brewer, we have Laval come into the microphone to clarify. Absolutely. Thank you for that clarification, appreciate that. All right, so councillor Vazika.
Thanks, um, I, I guess I misunderstood the first amendment, I thought, I thought friendly one, I have an amendment, amendment, but I wanted to wait until that was proper. So, is now a present, or no, it's not, okay, let's wait until.
Yeah, so we need to wrap up the second one, it sounds like. So we will vote on the second amendment prior to the first amendment, is that correct? Looking around for procedural, yeah.
Yeah, we don't need to vote on the first.
Right, the first amendment, okay, so let's go ahead and take council roll call vote on the amendment floor to floor height, ten feet, okay. Ms. Trimble, roll call vote, please.
Ready? Beginning with armor.
Yes.
Joe.
Yeah.
Jordan?
Yes.
Mel. Nugent?
Yes.
Vazika?
Yes.
Sarah? Campbell?
Yes.
And Carlino?
Yeah.
That's nine in favor, none opposed.
Okay, thank you, that amendment passes. Now we're back to our original motion with a friendly amendment. All right. So that motion is on the floor, council comments, council discussion. All right, councillor Vazika.
Thank you, um, I would just like to take it a little bit, uh, step further, uh, for the ADU, um, ADU. Um, increase the ADU area from the twelve hundred square feet that was accepted to, uh.
Okay, I will look to councillor Nugent to see if you would accept that as a friendly amendment to the friendly amendment.
You know, I think that, um, it was proposed and notices as a thousand and the staff indicated willingness to go up to twelve hundred. I think if going to fourteen hundred, I feel is, that's a big step from where we started. So I think we need to vote on, rather than me accept.
Okay, right, so we will go ahead, vote other, other council comments on the amendment councillor Vazika has made.
Um, I, I appreciate this amendment and I'm, I'm surprised as well, um, so this seems like a great change that we're making today, allowing for ADUs to be built between up to twelve hundred square feet now. Um, but I don't see a reason for city council to block the development of ADUs in our community that are going to be between twelve and fourteen and I think we should let those ADUs be built as well, so I'd be in favor of, I mean, of this amendment and the developments to come.
Other council comments? Councillor Nugent?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Davis. I, I generally support limiting or lifting some of the restrictions around this, however, fourteen hundred square feet, we are getting to what is some actual single-family houses that we see around town, it's actually bigger than some single-family houses that we see around town. And so I feel just that that big of a jump deserves bigger conversation as we go through code reform, so I think that we can, we continue to revisit that, but I'm, I'm not comfortable going all the way to twelve hundreds.
Your comment, councillor Vazika?
I just wanted to quickly justify presented that amendment, um, one of the public commenters, uh, mentioned that would allow the rent that you do to, um, housing prices grown exponentially, uh, so that was one of the reasons. And then, um, I was recalling the square-footed husband and it was a and it was a very big, small, small apartment and, um, there's no way that a wheelchair would have fit in that bathroom and, um, it was just, it was uh, it just felt like such a small, this just feels like a, a little
Thank you for additional comments. Councillor Farmer?
Yeah, I agree with Nugent. I think that, you know, we're already think we heard some pretty bits of we I also.
Councillor Becerra?
I, I guess I have a question maybe for, for staff at the right time, but it has to do with the amendment proposed and that is that I believe state law, uh, re, the requirements for an ADU read a thousand square feet or not larger than primary, single-family home. So we know that in Missoula, there are homes that are twelve hundred square. So if we were to jump to fourteen hundred, that would be in state law. It, I'm not sure state law, um, and leave, but I just want to make sure that by increasing the square, that we're not, or that we're not meeting, um, state law. So I, I think for the twelve hundred, uh, I think, and we might not, I just want to make, make sure, maybe staff can enlighten me on, um, what what that, uh, language says in state ADU.
Great, Laval, would you take that clarification or? If we repeat it? Oh, perfect.
Yes, I needed to, yeah, uh, I don't have. The, the one I'm looking at is, um,
uh, the legislation caps the size of an ADU to a maximum gross, uh, floor area of either one thousand square feet or not to exceed the size of the existing single family dwelling.
Well. Thank you for that. And we also have Ms. Truphard, who's raised her hand to provide some additional.
Yeah, I think that may be an older draft. The one I have pulled up says no more than seventy-five percent of the single family dwelling are a thousand square feet. And so the thousand square foot starting point was already more permissive than the state law. Um, and our direction from the attorney's office was that we could be more permissive.
Great, thank you. Other council comments? No? Okay. So I believe we will go ahead then and take a roll call vote on Council Vazika's amendment up to fourteen hundred square feet for an accessory dwelling unit. Ms. Trimble, when you're ready, we'll take a roll call.
Right. Beginning with Jones.
No.
George?
Yes.
Mels?
No.
Nugent?
No.
Vazika?
Yes.
Becerra?
No.
Campbell?
No.
Carlino?
Yeah.
And Farmer?
No.
Those three in favor.
Okay. That amendment does not pass. The original friendly amendment is still part of the original amendment? And I see Council Nugent has his hand raised.
I think, Mayor Davis, I have an amendment and it needs to be voted on because I have not discussed it with anybody on council, so I don't want to just the motion.
Okay.
I'm not violating any rule thing. I don't know. I'm looking around. Nobody seems to be shaking.
Yep, exactly.
So I would, I would like to add in the public comment, um, from Jason Rice and I Meg around parking specifically as it relates to the Land Use Institute or the Urban Land Institute and allowing for evaluating parking by uses. Uh, right now, what we have written in our code, and I can get down to the right place and read it too, says if an office, retail sales and residential and residential uses share off-street parking, the applicant may elect to use any one of the shared parking reductions of several of the reference points in the code. Applicant may also elect to prepare a shared parking analysis using the Urban Land Institute's shared parking analysis methodology. Um, parking reductions based on the ULI method require review and approval by the zoning officer after consultation with the city engineer. Um, the suggestion and public comment was to change the word and to or in this, um, so that it allows basically any combination of these mixes to use the same, not just, doesn't have to include housing. It can achieve some of the same parking, which I think just creates more flexibility for developers, but puts the onus on them to show. So I would move, I want to read this correctly. Um, I would move that we amend twenty point six oh, point three oh, be number four and replace the and with or. So the sentence reads as follows, if office, retail sale or residential uses share.
Okay, thank you. The amendment is on the floor. Is there any staff that wishes to present? Absolutely. Ms. Means, come on.
I did give Ms. Means a heads up.
Oh, all right. Yeah.
Right? Here's. Appreciate you doing that work in advance. Folks can see that. Thank you. And, Mr. Brewer, we can see that on the screen. All right, folks have not seen. Okay.
Let me know when you're ready for me to stop sharing.
I think folks have had a chance to take a look at that. You can go ahead and. Council Vazika?
I guess I have a clarifying question. Um, that slide that was briefly put up, um, this is why the importance. Um, so is that if, um, uh, so is it if?
It's backup for you.
So if office and then one of the other two are in there, or if any of the three of, I guess if, is it if office, then retail sales or residential uses? Okay. I'm getting a nod. Okay. So, uh, is, is it, okay, let me see. That if, if office and then or residential? Is it if? Do you want to respond to the question?
Do it. Definition of any of.
Okay, thanks.
Great.
So if, if need be, we can put a comma before or. All friendly amendment, my own amendment, motion. Yeah, no, you're right.
Getting granular. We're doing grammatical. But it's good clarifying. All right. Discussion. Not seeing any? Then we'll go ahead and take a vote on that amendment. We're going to take public comment first. Is there any public comment in the room this evening? On the most recent amendment? Okay, not seeing any in the room? How about online? Not, thank you very much. Okay. We have no public comment on this particular amendment. And so I think we'll go ahead and do a roll call. Ms. Trimble, we're ready.
Right. Voting on the amendment to the shared parking, replace and with or? Beginning with Jordan. Mels?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Vazika?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yeah.
Farmer?
Yeah.
And Jones?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Hey, great. That amendment passes. Now we have a revised motion that accepts new amendments. All right. I think we're then ready for full council vote. Oh, oh, oh! We've got one more.
I have one more question.
My brain over this evening.
This could be nothing. I apologize. Um, would, could somebody from staff speak to the public comment about suspended payment system and kind of explain that? That, I don't, that's not a part of this. Somebody who.
Ms. Means? Thank. I'm just gonna.
Laval, I might be able to bring that up as a side too, um, if that's helpful. Yeah, let me, um.
I'm really impressed by the prep work.
Coordinate.
Um, yeah.
If you, you bring that up, I'm gonna just share, um, thinking is this is there is still even point they that. This particular slide.
And I can speak to that, Laval.
Go ahead. I mean, absolutely, you bet.
Go ahead, Mr.
Yeah, okay. Um, so this is, uh, this was provided to us by the park department. And so this is the, um, example of two trees, one that was planted with the suspended pavement system and one without. Each maple was installed at the same time, same day, but same contractor. Soils used are the same as is the mold. The trees were from the same nursery stock and nursery. Both have the same irrigation systems and are set to keep soil moist, moisture at the same levels. Only difference here in the trees are the amount of soil volume, like Laval was, was talking about. Uh, the tree with the suspended pavement system has twice the soil volume and the amount appropriate for a class two tree like this. Uh, the tree on the right was planted in, in a similar pit, um, as the rest of the downtown trees. Uh, the traditional tree pit has a larger opening and is backfilled with true soil. Tree pits downtown are backfilled with road base, not soils, and are compacted according to sidewalk standards. The tree on the right, traditional tree pit is struggling, as you can see. The, it, it goes on. Uh, the, the internal growth small, leaves are smaller, the, the, the crown width and the, the height is smaller and the trunk size is smaller. Uh, this tree has also lost one of its main lateral branches near the top of the canopy due to it not being able to pull enough water to the top. Um, the tree in the suspended pavement see robust, well-formed crown, large internal growth is actively grown, no signs of deress. So this is, again, going back to Laval's point, this suspended pavement system allows for those soil volumes that can lead to healthier tree trees.
If I, if I could just emphasize to they are, the, the idea is this is if and um, be able that environmental about the
Council Jones?
Um, I'll just. I don't know. Phrase. Heard about just, just that I'm clear, this is always usually targeted because side trees are sit this is to get canopy, some shade that we don't have as that's my
goes with that or?
Council Carlino?
Yeah, I'm all for the urban trees. I'm just curious, um, I, we heard earlier the ten thousand dollar per member, but that accurate or what would you say that?
Just, Cassie, join us? Mr. Bard?
Um, I do not know the price and what it costs to install them, but I will note that without this incentive and this trade-off that they have the choice to make, uh, the regular standard would be fifteen percent of the parcel area landscape with one tree per a thousand square feet. So they would be planting a lot of trees anyways. So yes, there might be a more expensive option here, but it is an alternative to planting more trees on site.
Face on.
This might be going off record here, but the other thing that I would add about this situation is that there is a stormwater retention benefit to the, the cell suspended. That is an element that I just hadn't heard. That's really tonight, but it is part of the consideration as far as this design element.
Council Becerra?
Just to keep adding to, um, the benef, um, suspended, um, uh, systems is that I, what I have learned is that they, when you don't have them in place, especially in an urban setting, um, and you go for the, let's say that what we see in a lot of places around town is that later the cost comes back. You have to replace that again and you waste it. Um, that the tree would have had to grow big enough to provide that important canopy shade and, and all the other benefits associated with our urban. So it, it's a, it's an investment at the beginning, but, um, you read the benefits, um, later on by having a, a more, um, extensive canopy system in the city, especially in places where you have a lot more concrete and asphalt.
Other council comments? Or questions? Okay, not seeing any. Then, Council Nugent, would you like to make that amendment? I believe you were requesting clarification first.
Clarification.
Okay, 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 great. Thank you. Okay. How we doing? Any other amendments? Because there is a lot in there. Okay. Good discussion. Appreciate that. Okay. So, um, Ms. Trimble, I will ask if it is clear what the motion is or if you would like any for the record or reciting of the amended motion?
I, my understanding is that we are voting on the, um, on five point four, the first motion that should obviously including, um, Mr. Nugent's amendment.
And the two ones we vote.
Well, we already voted.
Okay. Thank you for that. So we're now voting on just the friendly amendment, the original. No?
No, no, it's, it's included. So we're, we're voting on the main one.
Okay. 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 I think we're clear what we're voting for. All right, with that, then Ms. Trimble will take the.
Okay. Getting with Counsel Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Seika. Sarah. Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino.
Yeah.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Jordan. Nine in favor and none opposed.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for the city staff that were here tonight to provide clarification. Um, this is a. Really great step forward, I believe, on a number of different fronts of the city of Missoula. Thank you for the folks that were here from the public to make comment and. Um, to nudge us along. Congratulations. Oh, we oh, I voted for the same.
Did we vote all at once?
Oh, yeah, we're not done. Sit back down. No, I'm kidding. All right, we have the second recommended motion, which is to adopt an ordinance. Found an interim ordinance number three seven. Permanent. Trimble?
All right. Beginning with Nugent.
Yes.
You see.
Yeah.
Sarah.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino.
Yeah.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan. And Mel.
Yes.
That is also nine in favor and none opposed.
Okay, thanks once again. Really appreciate it. And thank you, counselors. In Washington. Uh, we are done then. Item number five. But the but the good news is that there's nothing under new business under number six. Item number seven is public comments for items on the agenda, and so that that includes the consent agenda and it includes regular business. There are no agenda items under regular business. And so I will ask Ms. Trimble to read the items on the consent agenda, which were approved in city council committees. To be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a pack. The city clerk will read the list, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda, and we'll invite community comment on these items before we vote. So Ms. Trimble, would you go ahead and read the consent recommended motions, please?
I will, beginning with accounts payable, there's a motion to ratify accounts payable or claims checked dated March nineteen twenty twenty four in the amount of eight hundred sixty five thousand three hundred and one dollars. There's another motion to approve accounts payable or claims checked dated March twenty six twenty twenty four in the amount of seven hundred thirty thousand two hundred forty seven dollars one cents. There's a motion to approve a resolution declaring certain city of Miss property as surplus and authorizing its disposal at sale. There is a motion to adopt a resolution in support of the climate pollution reduction grants program to grant grant application joint submitted by Miss. Uh, mobility and climate sustainability and urban storage groups. There is a motion to adopt resolution of intention to vacate the northern ten point five feet Montana avenue and west nine feet California streets right away adjacent. Lot A, as shown in exhibit A, subject to the condition. Set public hearing for April eighth twenty twenty four. There's a motion to approve and authorize mayor to sign the city of Miss sidewalk improvements maintenance agreement with SBI leasing Inc. for the improvement as hundred. There is a motion moving the city to award the bids for street division, construction and maintenance materials as follows and authorize the mayor to sign purchase agreements with the lowest bidders. First, award the bid for eighty tons of malsified as RS two polymer modified to air gun asphalt and mulch. Montana at seventy four dollars ninety nine cents a ton for a total of one thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars two cents and authorize return of bid bonds. Second, award the bid for two uh, two thousand tons of asphalt grade B knife river of Miss Montana at six to eight dollars a ton for a total of one hundred and sixty. One hundred and thirty six thousand dollars and authorize return of bid bond. Third, award bid for three thousand tons of asphalt grade B eight. Of Miss Montana at seventy one dollars for a ton for a total of thirteen thousand dollars and authorize return of bid bonds. Fourth, award the bid of fifty hundred tons of grain aggregate. Knife River of Miss Montana at twenty nine dollars a ton for a total of forty three thousand five hundred dollars and authorize return of bid bond. Fifth, award bid for five hundred tons of half inch steel coat aggregate. Knife River F of Miss Montana at twenty nine dollars a ton for a total of four hundred five hundred dollars. Fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, authorize return of bid bonds. Sixth, to award the bid of five thousand tons of half inch winter traction aggregate to Knife River of Miss Montana at nineteen dollars a ton for a total of ninety five thousand dollars and authorize. We have a recommended motion to approve the forty four branch subdivision phase fifteen final. We have a recommended motion, which is also first reading and preliminary adoption ordinance to set public hearing on April twenty second twenty twenty four. To adopt an ordinance, rezone this located at ten ten and twenty and twenty third. Ten thirty reserve three legally described as lot six seven of East edition and lot one of Davis edition located in section twenty nine township thirteen north range nineteen west. P M M from B three dash two business use. D E dash C design excellence overlay corridor typeology four. Two C two dash three unity commercial. And D E dash C design excellent overlay corridor. Four, based on the findings, fact conclusions, law and support.
Oh, thank you. Those were some large motions in the consent agenda. Um, before taking public comment, I see Kristen Jordan has her hand up. Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. Could we?
Okay, you bet. So we will move eight point nine to land use. Um, during the act of regular business. Yep. Right, so eight point nine has requested to be removed by Counselor Jordan to regular business. And any other separations of? Okay, not seeing any, then counsel will take a vote on items eight point one, eight eight and. We'll do a roll call vote since we had an item separated. Thank you, Ms.
Beginning with Nugent.
Yes.
Seika.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino.
Yeah.
Farmer.
Yeah.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan. And Mel.
Yes.
And that's nine in favor on one for eight point.
Thank you. My intention was to take public comment prior to that consent agenda item, so I'd like to go ahead and take that now prior to the. Eight point nine. It's kind of cumbersome. This is our new agenda process. Um, eight point nine has been removed to regular business under committee reports, and I believe that would be under the land use planning committee report. Prior to taking, actually, I'm switching. Prior to taking public comment, let's hear your points made, Counsel Jordan.
Thank you. I realize this is really early on in the. Um, word six is just turning into. Word, we're losing our. Tired of. Got. Food desert. Thin. And after chatting with the residents. Turns that putting in a car wash. The houses that are. Fear this car wash. And I just put it on. Are. It. We're losing our character. It it's just it's. As these neighbors have said, they don't. Uh, they're not against. But our wash is easy. They have spray, smells. I I would ask. Washed it. This is.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Counselor Jordan, and. Um, yes, we can go ahead and take counsel comments prior to public comments on this agenda item.
Um, thanks. I I appreciate Ms. Jordan's comments. I want to. Make it known that to the public that the process of starting the public station is setting the. Where we hear from staff. Proposal. Most of us don't know anything. That starts the process where we hear from staff and begin deliberate decisions. So however you vote tonight is doing nothing but starting the process, which we we anybody who. So I will vote yes to schedule. I don't know enough.
It is stated in the recommended motion that the second reading is on April twenty second. Other other comments, questions, the Carlino?
I was just had a clarifying question for maybe somebody about. Like when it's a preliminary adoption. Are we just setting the public thing or are we exactly that mean when we add that? Preliminary.
Um, all ordinances are required two readings and so the this is just reading it's first time it's come before the public and then we can early adopt it. And then it goes for an official vote.
Counsel Becerra.
Um, I also think that, well, I just want to add my. Why I'm gonna vote to. To set the public hearing because the review process for this means that it has gone through staff preliminary review, which the clock tick. So delaying this might be. Setting the 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 rezone project. Back significantly, and I think that, you know, all we're doing right now is just setting a time when we can learn more about it and then make our decision. I will not. Support the um, I will support to continue to have it on the agenda for an April second.
Other council comments? Okay. Not seeing any, then. Um, public comment on this agenda item and you're welcome to comment on any. This agenda's item specifically has to do with the ordinance to rezone. Eight point nine, which we. Basically. Setting the. Hearing. Second. And public comment online. Not seeing any? Okay. We'll go ahead and take a vote. Item eight point. Ms. Trimble, roll call vote.
Getting with Seika.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino. Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan. Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one of.
Thank you, Ms. Trimble. All right, that item passes. So we have made it through quite a. Thank you very much. Um. We'll now move on to item number ten, which is public comment on non-agenda items. And coming any members of public to come on up. Please say and spell your last name and we'll keep our public comments to three minutes. I'll help you breath. Thanks for sticking it out.
My name is Mike Wilson. I don't wish to identify my word. First thing I'm going to say is for this would be great if. Maybe, you know. And just. Begin it. Sir. Keep talking. Anyway. Back to what I was bringing up earlier about my. That. Dual. Water. Water is something I could be wrong, but I understand it's kind of a necessary for us to have that. That's something I think Missoula's really cared a lot about. A lot of. Got. Water. Earth. But I've noticed cities and. We just pump out of. Water. Better maybe head. It's like our water a bit more. For the. Just a short term. Last thing I wanted to bring up. Expensive. Be first. I've been a. Six. Two years ago. Fun. All and. Yeah, I were able to bring my own. It'd be nice. That. Cost a couple hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Appreciate that. Other other members of the public that wish to come up and comment this evening?
Hello, I would like to make a.
Great. Please just identify your name and spell your last name if you would.
Emily Beeler. And. Miss Neatham. Um, so this is a thing I'd like to address. Community of Missoula. It's evident that a limited number of landlords permit when they have. And when they do. Theirs. For. And. The. This restrictive. Not only in. Moreover, I've. more during one of businesses. Have stop. I can clearly agree. Well. Some conditions. Thank
Thank you for your public comment this evening, Ms. You bet. All right. Anybody else in the audience? All right, not seeing anyone. How about online? Any public comment on items not on the agenda? Folks online. Seeing any? All right. That concludes then item number ten, which is public comment on non-agenda. Communications from the mayor. I do have something that I wanted to share with you all. Um, and um when I first took office, it became very clear that we needed to take a look at a in a wholesale way at the number of boards and just making sure that that the they're fighting what they originally intended to do. And the reason being is that we have some boards and commissions that um don't receive any applicants. There's there's a real struggle for us to actually find people. And some there's an overabundance. We just created with the county a new board um and commission, and that's the justice equity, diversity, and inclusion. We had over twenty applicants. Um, and I think that demonstrates the evolution of interest, civic interest, and matters of the city. Um, and so because of the amount of administrative support and expense that's related to boards and commissions, um, I have issued an executive order. It is not the same as a federal executive. So um, so it is an executive order to enhance the effectiveness of community boards and commissions in city governance. Um, and to be clear, an executive order issued by the mayor is an internal directive to manage operations within the city government or to articulate administrative policy or procedure. These orders allow for swift action during value evolving situations, allow the mayor to clearly articulate goals and expectations of staff and help establish consistent practices across city departments. Um, to add a little context for this, uh, the city of Missoula has certainly found it beneficial to incorporate groups of volunteer community members to support and advise in city decision making. Um, article four of the city of Missoula charter sets forth the basic guidelines for establishing volunteer boards, commissions, agencies, and committees, collecting and calling those boards and commissions. In some cases, these boards and commissions are required by state law. In other cases, the city council has previously determined that there existed an important need for public advice to support. Currently, the city alone involves eighteen standalone boards and commissions in aspects of city decision making. Collectively, they require over thirty staff members and can require over two hundred hours of administrative work per month. This workload can place a strain on departmental staff resources and constrain departmental capacity for other program work. The city has consistently added community boards and commissions to address important topics without consistently engaging in periodic review of these boards and commissions to evaluate continued need and effectiveness at achieving stated objectives. So um that directive, which I made last week for city staff, instructs staff to review existing board to assess their necessity, efficiency, and alignment with the city's strategic goals. The order also calls for the exploration of merging overlapping boards, regular reviews, and establishing guidelines for the creation of new boards, including a This initiative aims to ensure the city resources are used effectively and that boards are truly representative of Missoula's diverse community. So um I want to say that we don't want to take this as a one-off every time there is a challenge with one order commission. It makes sense um to me and also to the staff that we take a look at this in a holistic uh in a holistic way. So there will be recommendations that come that we will on others and other stakeholders. Um, this does allow us to continue to engage the public full way that on to um basically ballooning administrative um situation. In some cases, the original order commission may not be serving its purpose. Um, and so I'm excited to but I wanted you to know that that is happening and that work is underway. Happy et to questions. Um. So, all right, that's really all I had. And um we'll go ahead and start. Melz.
I'll be brief. I know I normally don't do this, but I was approached by a recently low-low national plan revision. But changes to that specifically in the rattles of bill board. Cool. Sharing that with um in the hopes sign on to make a bit of an impact how the considering second. Look. It's it has to do with character and the way that preserve the integrity of records. Specifically, that area was prevent the changes proposed out. It closure um two mills. I don't even know where
Thank you, Counselor Melz and Counselor.
Will pass.
Counselor.
Also pass.
All right.
It's a new gen. I always feel guilty when everybody else passes and I don't uh, but y'all know me by now. Um, I I wanted to mention a couple of things that have happened in the news the last couple of weeks. Councilman, Councilman Melson mentioned it, but the mills closing both Sealy Lake Pyramid and Roseburg here in Missoula are are obviously huge impact to both the city of Missoula community and Missoula County and Sealy Lake. Do you all know I I serve on the health board and the conversation around that mill closing and some of the other realities on the grounded Sealy Lake has been interesting and it's was covered in the news a little bit, but I want to highlight the the management of Pyramid Mill in Sealy Lake did not list lack of logs or anything like that as reasons they closed. They talked housing, talked about access to housing, but they specifically said that the Sealy Lake area lacked sewer system to provide housing. And you know, there was a plan handful of years ago that was put in front of the voters of the Sealy Lake Sewer District to put a sewer system in and it was, I think, about seventy percent. The cost covered and subsidized by federal grants and other funds, but there was going to be a significant long-term investment to the resident. And that ultimately was voted down. I think there was a combination of concern of costs, which I do not want to dismiss that concern at all, but there was also a concerted effort to organize over concerns that bringing a sewer to city Sealy Lake would have changed Sealy Lake, allowed more tourists than people to come in. And while that may be true, I think that's a valid concern. I think the flip side of that is if you're not looking forward and investing in infrastructure, you're letting a community grow stagnant, and there are unintended consequences of that as well. Um, but I hope there can be maybe a future positive outcome for both the pyramid site and sewer in Sealy Lake. I think it should be a lesson to communities that you have to invest in infrastructure. Infrastructure is what what so much of what makes a community work is built upon. And if you don't invest in infrastructure, there are there are a myriad of unintended consequences. I just think it's worth noting that um that's an important part of our conversation and I I just, you know, my heart's with everybody up in Sealy Lake.
Indeed. Thank you. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, just two things really quick. It did have occasion. There was no meeting previous, but I did have occasion after public forum, the U S Postal Service. I I guess first off, hats off to, you know, I don't know
Oh.
He's done a year full uh well over two hours at that night. Uh, you know, and I had attended with the hopes of having some of my concerns and guards to see if things that were here and out of our resolution and back up, you know, and supporting our local postal workers and union thereof. But you know, I still those concerns I have still with, and I I just still have concerns about particularly with letter mail being delivered from Missoula to Missoula, even just send a letter across town, even election season, you know, the turn came up with ballots. Ballot is a letter turned in. Uh, if you're you live on Wyoming Street and you want to mail your ballot to the election center on Wyoming Street, it will go to Spokane. It's a letter. So that opens up in my mind a whole new list of applications with you know, mail-in ballots for elections that I have that concern generally to add to that concern and my concerns with efficiency of elections, but trying to get off track. But just generally speaking, though, the notion of distribution center being relocated to Spokane is still a major concern, and I I think there's a number of issues the postal service needs to you know, figure out um before they reach that decision. I hope our federally elected officials in the state or senators are due diligence to, you know, keep things as they need best support. West Canada or distribution center that here. The other thing I'll bring up this real quickly is I had occasion to spend some time with family down in Texas two weeks ago. I have a son that's serves with the third armored cavalry regiment down at Fort Brazos, Texas. He's been deployed overseas. I was gonna be there till early winter. So we had occasion to spend a week down there for his wife, family. I got to meet a new grandson uh first time. He's four months old. Um, but it just really brought home and they live on on post, which is different for them. They've been fortunate to be able to buy off close housing, but in this situation, they opted to move and live on post. And it was kind of brought back a lot of memories, mostly good, some not so good with, you know, active duty and time spent on an army installation. And it just made me reflect afterwards, especially coming home, you know, the need to just keep our you know, men and women uniform in mind and sacrifices they made, sacrifices that families make that are left behind. You know, when those soldiers, airmen, sailors, marines go forward to do what they have to do and just be supportive of all those things.
Thank you for your service, Counselor Campbell, and all the best to your family.
Thank you and kind of new grandson.
Yeah.
Um, I I'll keep it brief. You heard a lot of from me tonight, um, but I just wanted to uh wish everybody a very happy Easter weekend and um to remember that winter's not over yet. So be very careful if you are traveling this.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Jordan? Okay, great. Well, thanks, everybody. Thanks for um a very robust council meeting tonight. And um with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting at ten thirty-one P M.